Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairview Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice in this meeting has been given to, uh, given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act at the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice the schedule was sent through and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and the two overtimes on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. That notice is also posted on the board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file at the office of the Borough Hall. Copy of the notice has also been sent to members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice hasn't been given. The board secretary is directed to include this statement in the next meeting. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants or experts, the audience, about the role and authority of the Fairview Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate, independent municipal legal entity and its limited authorities specifically set forth in borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. Squad legislation on nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough of Fairview. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from requirements of boroughs' land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairview ordinances, like satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations were advanced purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to his own plan. Variance is related to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call please.
Mr. Monteschi? And I'm here. Mr. Ryan? Mr. Fordland?
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Merson? Here. Mr. Hensel? Mr. Rieger?
Here. Okay, first matters. Oh, she flagged. Big circle.
My allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, it's not open to the public, this time was wrong. Yeah. Okay, the first application on the agenda today is the Mirth application. This is a matter that was heard previously. Um, it's been carried previously. Um, Mirth is not being heard tonight. Um, I'd like to make an announcement that we are carrying the Mirth application to the meeting in May. What is the date shield? May third?
No.
May first. The Mirth application is being carried to May first. Anyone here on the Mirth application? Okay, are we gonna need a roll call vote, do we? Yeah, okay. Awesome. Okay, great. Um, all right, we're gonna move on to the Lee matter, please. Can I confirm that we have jurisdiction in this matter? Okay. Anyone involved in the Lee application may ask you to step forward. I'm swearing that at this point in time, including Mr. Rizzo. So I swear the testimony you give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
I do.
Yes. What I'm gonna ask you to do is before you start testifying, state your name on the record, spell your last name. You're due, you know, the seat, you're a little bit housekeeping at this point in time, your marks and exhibits. Your mark is A1, when developing the application checklist, as well as this overworded adjustment application. The mark is A2, the variance request. This is the state of your exceptional conditions, dated November eleven, twenty twenty four. A3 is going to be the zoning permit denial by Nick Stinkstein. That's dated October thirty, twenty twenty four. A4 is the survey of the property prepared by Morgan Engineering Survey dated June twenty first, twenty twenty four, unrevised. A5 are the actual architectural plot diagram and first floor plan, uh, prepared by Nick ler Architect dated October fourteen, twenty twenty four, unrevised, as well as ZB1, which is the CME report, Mr. Rizzo's signature dated December nineteen, twenty twenty four, as well as zoning board two, ZB2, which is the prior ZB, zoning board adjustment resolution, which was memorialized, six, two, two. And I asked, are there any waivers that we need to address? No, so I'll just one second, I'm just gonna note for the record that, uh, Mr. Shiovi is around to tell.
Mr. Kovas, um, so this application you'll hear in a moment from now again is for a depp addition, so keep that in mind when you hear the checklist waivers. Uh, first one is complete floor plans. They provided a partial first floor plan only. Second is elevations on all sides of the structure. Third is the location and type of proposed attic access. Uh, fourth is a key map. Then there are tax certification and copies of all competencies, easements and deeds. I don't take any exception to these checklist items. Um, the tax status, I, I checked, um, even today, um, as well when it was, the application was made, and the website says that all packs are current. And then, um, this application was approved in twenty twenty two, um, for the house. Um, so at that point in time, floor plans and the other architectural plans were reviewed. Again, this is for a debt, so I don't take exception to the more detailed sheets.
You can take an exception, you're community. Anyone have any question about the proposed waivers? Okay. That it? Or are you sure?
Hi, my name's Eric Lee, uh, last name is L U D. Uh, I bought the property with my wife in August last year, and, um, since we've been, uh, living there, we've come to realize that the access to the backyard is not, uh, very conducive for our living. Um, the living room and the, uh, kitchen is where we're spending most of our time. We have, uh, two year old son, and we have another baby on the way any day now, should be two weeks from now. Um, so we are hoping to install the deck to be a landing so that we can have the, uh, the door open out from the living room, and then you can walk down from the deck to the backyard. Um, and right now, because it's the way that the house was built, um, it's right up against the, um, the rear, uh, setback part.
Let me see, well, I did omit A6, which are the color photographs and the subject property that are on dated six pages, uh, two images each sheet. Those reflect the actual conditions that exist at present?
That's right.
Okay, that, you ready to press the vote?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Vincent Minkler, I'm the architect for the project. The last name is M I N K L E R. Yeah, like my client specified, uh, they are looking to build a wood deck, uh, at the rear of the property to make access to the backyard.
I did not know if you just testified. Are you testifying in architecture, is that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Could you put your credentials on the record, please?
What's that?
Your credentials on the record?
Uh, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for ten years. I have, I have practiced for those ten years. Uh, I've appeared before various, uh, boards before. While my drawings have appeared before this board before, I have not. That's like, all right.
Uh, are your licenses interactive?
Yes.
And you've never testified before this board before?
No.
What boards have you testified before?
Uh, Red Bank, Middletown, Little Silver, uh, many, we live in the area.
But anyone have any questions in regard to Mr. Minkler's qualifications? Okay, Mr. Minkler, go ahead.
So yes, my client's looking to construct a wood deck to the rear of their, uh, property to make access to the rear yard, uh, much more convenient for them. Um, currently, the only access to the rear yard, uh, from the living area is through their front door, going around the house, through a new gate that has been installed, um, in order to get to that backyard. There is access from the basement to the rear yard. Uh, the basement is more of a utility space. Uh, you'd have to go down the steps inside to then get, uh, to that rear door to the outside. Um, with the young child and young child, uh, potentially being in that rear yard, the, uh, parents would like to have faster access to there, um, uh, which is the entire reason for the deck. Uh, the size of the deck is, uh, constructed so to make sure we maintain clearance around the existing AC condensers that are at the rear of the property. Um, that is for servicing and, and things like that. We're not going up, uh, so close to them, uh, to make service and those difficult.
Can you talk about the height of the deck?
Uh, yes, the height of the deck is, uh, roughly, um, let's see, somewhere, uh, it is five steps from grade, um, so it's roughly around forty inches or so. So there would be around, installed around the deck.
So in line with the finished floor, obviously, you have to have forty inches above ground and then plus the rounds, which would be a compliant item. All, all sides of the deck, probably the rest there's.
Correct.
And then, um, what is the boxes that you're showing around the AC units? I mentioned you want to parents.
Yes.
It looks like you're drawing new, you know, new, you see unit boxes, you see the original below it. Are you moving them, increasing the size or anything like that?
No, uh, the boxes that are there to show the required clearance around those AC, uh, condensers, um, which is to help clarify the distance for the stairs, uh, from the, the deck.
So no changes?
No changes to those AC.
And what about, so give a hose spigot there?
Uh, there's a current hose spigot there. Uh, we will make sure that the deck is modified in a way that that's is accessible, but with bill changes, uh, to the spigot itself.
So do you think you're gonna cut off a few feet of what you're showing?
Uh, there may be just an access panel or a flip up hatch or something like that, just to make the hose more accessible.
Is it gonna be under the deck?
Uh, it will be field determined based on the height. From what I saw, uh, the deck is pretty close to that height, and there's also a sprinkler service line there, the meter is there. Um, uh, so it's, uh, if the panel will either be, um, underneath the deck or there may be a notch in the rear of the deck, uh, depending on how it sits.
And then what about the stairs from the basement coming up? Are you gonna be basically constructing the deck into the, the concrete for that?
Uh, those stairs from the basement, um, are currently recessed into grade with a retaining wall around it. The thought was to rest the deck on top of that retaining wall. If it is a true engineered retaining wall and can handle that load, if it's not, we will, uh, have the deck, um, cantilevered off of new piers underneath it.
And then, um, in terms of windows, like, are you modifying any windows to the house or is it strictly a?
No, there is strictly adding a door to the, the rear of the house. Uh, the windows and everything else would remain.
Yeah, that's all I have, thanks for the next.
Jordan, how many variances are triggered by the board?
It's one, uh, one variance.
Okay, and what is the variance exactly?
The minimum required rear setback is thirty feet. That's for principal structures. The proposed depth, which is attached to the dwelling, will be considered the principal structure, so that's twenty point six feet, whereas the thirty feet's required. The existing condition was actually measured to the basement stairs. So those are twenty three point one, and then the house itself is shown to be compliant. It is about thirty one feet. The rear setback of the property.
So no law coverage issues, no, nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Minkler, Mr. Lee, are you familiar with the history of this property?
I am not. No.
Have you read the resolution that approved the structure that's there today?
No.
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 Thanks for the.
I reviewed it, but just, you know, I'm, I'm right here, it was not.
So from my perspective, I can certainly understand, um, why, you know, putting a deck onto this house seems reasonable. I can also understand the issues with regard to access to the rear of the property. Um, I couldn't tell you why the design is as it is. Um, I can tell you that the house has a torture history. I think it was before this board, maybe on three separate evenings to go through plans. There were a long list of variances that were created by this board and what will become of the structure that's there today. Um, Doug, you're in a position to list off what those variances are?
Identify them. One of the usual things was that the square footage of the property at that point in time is identified as eight thousand one hundred and thirty nine, seemed to have grown. Uh, the lot debt, uh, shed was removed, floor area, three stories, and I guess the, uh, floor area ratio, before all the variances were granted in the past.
Well, side yard and front yard, too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes. So i- if, if access to the rear is the main issue, and given where the house is situated relative to the rear, a setback, we're trying to figure out the best possible way with a minimum, um, need for a further variance on this lot, it would be a door with a stairway down to a patio or something else. Um, has that been considered?
The, uh, door would have to have a landing to the outside per code, so there would be a size to that landing. It couldn't just be stairs down. Um, so the distance would be relatively the same as far as how far.
So we, we measure the setback to anything above six inches essentially.
Okay.
So even with, even if you could just do stairs straight down, we'd measure it to the.
To land.
Yeah, to the ground, essentially where it touches the ground. Um, so the question is, did you, did you consider that? How was the impact different or improved?
Well, um, it would definitely be less of an impact to just have a landing and stairs down. Um, the thought was that it could be a space that the barbecue could be at, um, rather than having to go up and down those steps each time to, to grill or, you know, uh, whatever would be needed there. Um, also an elevated platform from the rest of the yard, uh, for the homeowners to be able to sit and watch their children.
I, I can understand the request, uh, but I can't understand the request in a vacuum without taking into consideration all the variances that were previously granted.
I'm sorry to interrupt, if the deck was something that was, I believe, proposed in the initial application and then removed prior to the meeting where the application was.
Is that right?
You recall it? Nice job. Well, I mean, I, I look back at, at, uh, at minutes. Um, and somebody at some point reeled off what had been changed, where plans were submitted for that particular meeting, and that was one of the items was a, a rear deck. Um, so although it doesn't appear in the resolution, it's because it was eliminated in the first round, so to speak, as far as I could tell.
It's sort of, to translate what that, what that would mean to a board member to understand that that was originally part of the proposal, is that when they originally came before us, they had a long list of variances. And a long list of variances were granted, but as part of the discussion and the accommodation to the board and trying to understand what the board felt is where they could grant, that was pulled from the plans. It would have triggered another variance, obviously.
That was the previous owner, correct? You purchased the house last year?
That's right.
They, they built the house.
Right.
Well, renovated.
Okay.
It wasn't deteriorated.
And the, the issue, the issue for me, and I'm interested in what anybody else might have to say, is that the, it, there's some common phraseology which would apply here, slippery slope, too many potatoes and too small bag, and, and so each one of these things creates an incremental problem, but I think that when a board looks at something that was this complicated and was this stuff difficult to make work, um, it, it, it is with pause that you review a further application to further expand a structure that required so many variances to fit there in the first place. And for, for not a moment, please don't misunderstand, we recognize that we didn't create those problems, um, but they run with the land, and, and the board is not allowed to take your personal situation into account when it evaluates it. Now, you have an argument with regard to safety, and I know you know that because you've played it up already, and accessing the backyard is, is certainly an issue that the board should be interested in understanding and trying to figure out whether or not the original plan was so flawed that maybe we shouldn't have granted the approval to build it, because it sounds like the house doesn't really function very well, um, you know, as it's laid out.
Um, and I'm, I'm just curious, can you just, what was granted? The doesn't seem to line up with the existing numbers that are on here.
Yeah.
Issues, maximum habitable floor area ratio as being compliant, we granted thirty nine point nine.
We granted a four million.
And, uh, habitable floor area. Here it says, first, two thousand eight fifty, and we granted thirty two forty five, so I don't, I don't know if it's like an as-built that this was based on.
We don't have.
If you measured it, what's that?
We don't have complete plans of it. It hasn't been measured by me at least.
Yeah, I did not have complete plans.
Where did you get the, where did you get these figures?
It's based upon the footprint of the home, knowing that's a two-story home, that's, that's where that number is based on. Because we were not modifying the floor area, I didn't find it to be relevant to measure the entire house.
But, but wait a minute, but you're putting numbers on a plan that you're seeing, and, but you didn't really do the calculations to confirm that they were right. It would have been far better to have asked for a waiver.
Sure.
Of completion of the zoning table if you weren't in a position to fill it out correctly.
Sure. Sure.
O- okay, so where are we getting our numbers?
For the purposes of the record, the numbers in my letter are from the resolution, so I'm not utilizing the numbers on the plan.
Right, I'm just saying, the plan.
No, I, I understand.
When you get this and you know that it's not consistent with the plans that the board has from a few years back, did you tell Mr. Minkler that the numbers were wrong? Well, I, I think we should be doing that. Um, we wouldn't always have the information that we have. It's fairly unique, um, to see a, a, an application on something that we've seen so I, I guess what I'm more interested in knowing is whether or not the house was constructed in accordance with the plans that we had authorized, although the only relevance to this would be whether or not there's anything that affects the, the variances or would, you know, need to be considered or appropriate to consider in light of the request. Um, I, I am disappointed that we have wrong numbers.
Generally, also, when we have pre-existing non-conforming conditions, we let them in the resolution.
Well, that, so, so I, I don't know how an architect would do it, but I think that you would list the requirements, and then you would list the existing conditions, and you would note that the conditions were pursuant to variances that were granted. But Mr. Minkler said that he didn't read the resolution.
Yes, normally, when I am dealing with an addition or some type of alteration, uh, to the existing house that I know would modify the floor area, I would definitely pay more particular attention to that. Um, but that's, that's what I can say towards that, um, you know, based upon, you know, it, it would take me a, a few hours to, to go through and, and measure the entire house, um, in order to verify those numbers. Um, to go off the resolution numbers, I certainly could do that, um, and I would do that in the future.
Uh, actually, I don't think that's the right way to do it either.
Sure.
I think you could have pulled the construction plans from the construction office, and I think that you could have cited on your zoning table that you're pulling those numbers from the construction plans.
Sure.
And, and look, we're not gonna fault the applicant for that issue.
Sure.
And I don't think this board would wanna see you in your practice charging your clients to do things that shouldn't be relevant to what's going on. But I think the lesson is how you communicate to the board is really important.
Sure.
And when your table says certain things with your seal on it, we take you at your word.
Sure.
And so, but that, that's wrong, so I think we know that now, and I think we can move beyond it.
Next time, uh, if anything, I would have it listed as estimated, just to be clear that it wasn't a calculated based upon my own measurements.
Yeah, well, and Jordan's gonna flag it for you, and I'm not sure that estimated will get you through, but, o- okay, we, we flagged it. I, I'm interested in what other board members feel about the proposal to add a deck to the regular structure.
I have a question about safety. Uh, you've got basement stairs, which you're going down, and you've got a deck which is going up. What are you proposing between the deck going up and the stairs going down to keep a toddler from falling off into a, and basically in a hole?
Uh, it's, there would be a guard rail, a railing around the deck. That prevents that fall.
Is the railing changing to the basement stairs, or that's?
There is no railing to the basement stair currently, because it's not.
What you were asking is if they fall off and they'll just land in the hole, is that correct?
Exactly.
Yeah. I think he's asking if there's be some sort of screen or divider, is that correct?
Exactly.
Right, the, the rail, the guard rail. That's what code requires.
And that, that's a substantial, substantial guard rail.
A thirty-six inch high guard rail.
And no further, because there's one small handrail around the, the stairs going down the basement, but that's just gonna remain into.
I think the challenge is, it seems like the house is already oversized with a lot, especially because the calculations are, you know, we're not sure, so you almost have to take it at face value that what's here or what was granted in the resolution, right, is what was built. And to that end, it's already pretty oversized, there was already a long variance is granted. It, it does seem like it should have been there to begin with, but I think it, the backyard is not that deep to begin with.
Well, the house meets, the house to the, to the, it's where you're measuring it from.
Right.
Because the rear yard setback is thirty, which is, is as per, uh.
Yeah.
The problem is that we're measuring to those steps, right? Uh, Jordan, we're measuring to the basement steps that are coming out?
For existing conditions, correct, yeah.
Yeah, which is at grade, and it's not really that.
Right.
Big of any decision.
That's what I'm measuring is.
Correct.
But now you're taking, what's the deck ten feet?
I'm sorry, I'm measuring it there because there is the railing. The, the steps themselves, I wouldn't say would trigger the, uh, the setback.
It has to. It has to, it's structured. We, we, I don't think we need to get into the nuances.
Even if they go down, even if they're graded and they go down rather than up, that's where you would measure to?
I, I, I would, I don't know what the relevance of it is here.
No, I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure out how much we're losing. So we're losing ten feet of backyard.
Eleven.
Eleven, it's eleven by eleven, just the point of dimension.
I think that's exactly the way you should look at it.
Twenty foot seven. Yeah. Twenty foot seven, we're thirty to put it, so.
Here, here's the issue for me. The issue is that the house is squeezed into the lot to begin with. Again, it's not Mr. Lee's fault. It's a big house for the lot, and we know that because we had to grant a lot of variances in order to put it there. Those variances were granted as an accommodation to figure out how to renovate this structure and how to bring it up into accordance with modern times and to allow the prior owner to develop it in a way that it sits today, which on balance was viewed by this board just a few years ago as a reasonable compromise. The suggestion that there's a design, a design flaw should have been evaluated when they originally designed the house, and it should have been incorporated. It was certainly apparent when the Lees bought the house, there was no access to the rear yard. Um, it, it is, it is problematic to me that it doesn't meet the front yard setback, it doesn't meet the side yard setback, and the proposal now is that it won't meet the rear yard setback. It is just extending the problem in a different direction. I like the idea that it fixes a safety issue. I, I'm not buying entirely that it is a safety issue, because I think if it were a safety issue, the Uniform Construction Code would address it as such. I think it's a convenience, and I think it's a design issue. I don't think that the deck is the minimum way to get outside. And if you were proposing the minimum way to get outside based on code, I think I would feel differently about it. I have yet to hear, though, from others who may feel differently, but I encourage you to share your thoughts.
I, I don't feel differently. I think the steps, I think steps down could solve your problem without building more structure. It's a nice to have a deck. I would like it to, but I don't know that that's the, the.
Can, can I just step in? Um, it was told to me that, right, uh, the minimum way, which would be steps, would also require a variance.
It will.
Which is why, you know, when we were at that decision point, we decided, well, if we were going to request a variance, we would request a variance that would be also, you know, fit for usable decking, which is why we decided to be eleven by eleven. Um, we did think that was still, you know, uh, less than, you know, a, a substantial variance that would extend it even further past the requirement, but, um, you know, we would be open to a more, a, a western footprint, and just we figured because of the request of variance anyhow, we thought we would at least try something that we could use again for, you know, sitting and, and, um, just open up a better wing rather than just walking directly out the stairs.
That is inherently reasonable. And, and the truth is, you don't have any of the context that the board has with regard to the application. Candidly, you had the opportunity to learn it. Um, when you bought the house, I I would have thought that you would have had. Some information about the history of it. When you thought about making changes to it, you had to fill out an application. Which included whether or not there were any variances that were previously granted. And there was an opportunity to read what is a very long and detailed resolution about the effort to get this house to where it is today. And so that's the context in which the board communicates with you and I, I I I think it's important that you understand that.
Sure.
Because if you were in a different place and there were no other variances, I think that we would probably view it differently, but. My view of the variances is that it's an imposition on your neighbors on all sides. So when you're in the front yard setback, that's an imposition on the public space. When you're in the side yard setback, that's really an imposition on the public space because that's a public piece of property. And now when you extend to the rear, that's an imposition to your neighbors in the rear. And and we're really hyper focused on it because that's what Mayor Josh tells us we're supposed to do. And so the development pattern in the neighborhoods is all based on the rules.
Right.
And when we grant deviations to those rules, we need to be mindful of destroying that pattern. And the truth is that the house already is difficult to shoehorn into the regs. Um, and so that's, that's what we're struggling with.
Would it be possible and if you would be open to lining up with those existing basement stairs? Since that is the existing non-conforming setback?
Well, it's a disaster base neither way.
Sure.
But but, you know. Question is whether or not by pulling it in some to to mark that line. Whether or not that would create enough of a an accommodation to the rear yard setback. That that whether board members would feel differently.
Does that change the height of the stairs?
I don't think you can do it with with your side. You have this that exclusion zone for your um.
For the.
For the condensers if you lined up with the basement stair, you're encroaching on that exclusion zone.
Right, but if one condenser is moved, the other one can then be serviced without needing, you know, right now it's more convenient. To be able to service both independently, but you could have the argument of needing to move the one to service the second one.
And how proud are you of that of that uh, stair?
What's that?
How far, but what's the, what's the delta between the edge of your existing and that stair?
Uh, the deck itself is eleven feet, it's seven feet.
No, the the. The stairwell that goes down into the basement. You're proposing to pull the deck back to even that, right?
Uh, I I would need to verify that. Uh, I believe it's about eighteen inches, but I'd have to verify that number.
It's like two and a half feet.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's closer to three feet, yeah. I think the challenge is too, right, is that because it's elevated and the grade of the property naturally goes down. It's going to be very visible from the people behind and if you look at the pictures, they have some. Green giants, which is all fine, all good, it just so happens though where. The trees end is exactly, is exactly where this is going to be viewed from, right? So to the extent it is an imposition on. The neighboring lot, um, it will be very visible.
Is there any chance to have discussions with any of the neighbors?
I've talked to the neighbors in the front. Now, I haven't spoken to the neighbors that. Um, it's directed by, I don't know. Um, but all the neighbors on the front side have been very supportive.
Well, of course, because it's not in there.
Well, no, 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 I don't think that's fair. Look, I mean, we we oftentimes have neighbors that come in and support applications. Because they think that it's fine, but those neighbors move and green giants get cut down. And while those are factors, I don't think that they're not driving forces for me. Look, I mean, to me, i- if the request is to put in a a a landing. And then a stair that goes to the side, I I see that differently, but I'm I'm really struggling with with the addition of the deck, however modest it is.
You would need a variance for any location.
Yep.
At this point, I do think that this absolutely needs an access to the backyard. I I I agree that that is a safety issue. Um, I'm not convinced that having the eleven by eleven porches is. The way to go, but I do think that you needed a a rear entrance. I think it's a shame that they would have built it this way. I don't, I don't recall this, so it must have been before.
It was always, it was always gonna be a split.
But did they not have a back door?
No, the the basement stairs were supposed to be coming out of there, that was the the rear access. Um, it was a. In bad rundown house.
Well, no way, but 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 remember, so so when they tried to figure it out. They presented to us all the things that they wanted. They pared it back. They accepted the compromises. I don't remember specifically whether we talked about access to the rear or not. But but clearly the issue was on the table. Um, and I guess to the extent that it was discussed at that time and that we'd actually said, don't do it, but I I I'm struggling with that too.
And also I think if they didn't build it to to the extent of the variances that we gave them. That that would be helpful to know too. So if maybe they actually didn't expand it someplace else.
No, but they would have to, because they would only be able to pull permits in accordance with the exact plans that we approved. So the the issue really is whether or not they exceeded that. That's what you would see if we did a fresh analysis.
So in that case, then absolutely taking the construction plans would have made sense to for the numbers then. So I thought maybe there was a potential that it wasn't. Exactly, right, but you're saying that 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 couldn't have happened.
Well, it could have happened. It couldn't have happened the way it's supposed to happen. Because the specific plans that were approved are tied to the construction permits. It's all supposed to be tied together.
Yes, but can't you do less? You can't do more.
Can't modify. Because who's to say whether or not what they wanted to to remove would be something that was relevant to you. So I'll give you an example. There's a house on Ferry Road that we approved. And we did not speak about um, the how many courses the basement was gonna pay. When the house eventually got built, they added courses to the basement that they didn't tell us about. So they had to add five extra steps that moved towards Ferry Road, changes the front yard setback, changes the entire appearance of the house. The house that we approved is not the house that got built. It was a mistake. And it was a struggle to get the construction department to understand that, but eventually they did. It's gotta be on the money.
Any landscaping plan for that fence to mitigate, because you can't plan on the neighbors planting.
The rear fence?
Yeah, I know there's not a lot of room now if you're gonna go to twenty feet, but.
We didn't plan on it, no.
Alright, so look, so the application is to put in this deck, just like it is. We moved from your presentation to discussion and we sort of engaged you somewhat. There's been a discussion about a potential alternative, but this has all become a little irregular. What we would normally do is present everything. Here, um, then the deliberation and then you would consider what we've said, um, and then we would open it to the public and then we would vote. So let's get some regularity about this. Does anybody want to add anything further before we go to the public?
I can just put on record that I agree that they should have a deck to some kind of extent. I agree that it would help with the flow, especially with their kids. Um, and that's. When you're looking at houses, I understand that they probably just thought, oh, we could totally just put a deck here and they don't understand the rigidity. Of our zoning process.
Okay, so are you saying that as proposed, you're in you're leaning in favor of what's proposed?
Um, it sounds like they would be willing to accommodate some kind of a compromise. But I think in general, I agree that there should be some kind of deck landing, something stairs going down. It adds a nicer facade to the back, which right now is just a white wall.
Okay, how does everyone else feel about that? Mr. Borate, what do you think about that?
Um, a- as it stands now, I'm not uh, in support of it in any shape or form. I think the house is already shoehorned onto the lot. I think. It's a bad precedent to continue to add on to things that have just recently been added on to, although I wasn't here for it. And I I think unfortunately, listen, I would I would love the deck too, but. We we unfortunately can't all have what we want, right? And that's why this exists to not make it get to a place where. You have a Franken house where all this stuff is attached to it. Um, so I'm not in favor of it in any shape or form in the current way, it's uh.
I don't think, I don't think the house works as it exists today. And I think that from a safety standpoint and from a. Uh, from a functionality standpoint, I think that some type of access from the house. To the yard is needed. Now, in what form that occurs, I I I I don't know, but you know, it just. It just seems to me that if we kill this whole thing, that um, that you're 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 really. Putting a burden on the leaves that um, uh, that really shouldn't exist because they didn't understand. You know, what this entailed when they bought the house. And they, once they lived in it, they realized that this house doesn't work the way that it currently exists.
I'm 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 going back to laughter experience. We need something there. I don't know that the ten or eleven. But there needs, I think there really should be some access to the backyard, whether it's just a simple set of steps or not. Which of course isn't much. Although they do require variance, the uh, the structure is much less intrusive.
Here here's the problem that I have with that. I totally appreciate it because I'm empathetic and I'm a human being and I totally get it. But what I I find problematic about that is that we we did not require that in the.
Requirement, it wasn't really an ask for, I remember this case. It was, they were willing to make compromise on compromise to get us to to agree to the farm number, really, is what it was. And. You know, it was okay, we'll take that off, that'll eliminate that variance, we'll eliminate this variance. It doesn't work.
Look at the size of the resolution. This is the thickest one I've ever seen.
It was, it was, it was a mess. I I my my point is that that those those feelings about the house working. Should be discussed when the house was developed. And and fine, it wasn't. But the reason I'm saying it is because please in the future, let's do that. Because it is, it is entirely logical that you would want this. You have a tremendous slope here. The the grade, the grade. Is really substantial. Um, and so, you know, I I I I'm not even looking at Mr. Lee because it makes it harder. To say what I think I really feel about the project. But it just, it it is, it is difficult with with people. We always struggle with that.
Everyone wants it. Everyone wants the deck. I think it's just a horrific precedent for what's already something that's obviously incredibly challenging. It's, this thing is so thick. This is one of the thickest resolutions I've ever seen. And then on top of it, it's it's encroaching from all sides. I mean, it's literally encroaching from all sides. So I I don't, I don't know. I'm, I think it's really tough.
Mr. Shiu Vett?
Um, do you find this minutes or not? No, I'm. Strong, I'm sure that I have them downloaded somewhere, but.
Well, we have the file. What what exactly you want to look at?
No, I was just trying to find what I read earlier about the.
Deck being.
Rear deck, but. I also looked at the original renderings and. The original renderings don't look anything like the footprint here and had a landing. And a significant. Stair down to grade because at that time. The. The sliding doors, the cellar, I think they had proposed on on grade. It is very original, the the first time around.
As I recall, the the basement area included both utility space and finished space. Is that correct? Is that how it was finished?
Yeah, there is finished space, but it isn't where we primarily use. Uh, we don't spend time with our child there. So in order to get outside, we basically are walking through space that we're not really using as like livable space.
But but as the basement was fit up. Is the finished area adjacent to the stairs and do you walk through finished area or do you need to go through utility room to get to these stairs?
You do walk through finished space to to head out, um, yes.
That's not what the testimony was just a little while ago, right? It was basically made it seem like you're walking through an unfinished basement to get out. Am I wrong about this?
Most of, well, the, uh, much of the basement is utility space.
But the area that you walk through.
Right, you 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 still do walk downstairs and then you walk through some finished space to go out, but. Again, it's not like that's where we spend most of our time.
No, I understand, but it is finished space. You're not walking through a dusty basement with your child.
No.
With adjacent to a furnace.
No.
Okay.
And and what is it finished as? Is she rock and floor and?
Yeah, right. It was like originally proposed in one.
So my guess is, because this is three stories, that that's a finished level, that it was basically. Put together with that being the access. That you couldn't get to it from the other level because it's not, it's kind of a four and a half. I I don't know. Based on, based on the discussion, which I want you to absorb. It sounds like this side of the day is kind of has some empathy for the situation, forgive me. Um, but that there's some, there's some um, struggle with exactly the eleven feet. Or whether or not it might be a landing with a staircase that will go down so that it's the minimum, but that it would get you outside. Before I I before we go further, I'm gonna see whether or not anybody else has any comments, but I just wanna, I just wanna seed you with a thought. That that we've heard this and and I don't know exactly because they weren't exactly asked, because you only have one proposal on the table, right?
Yeah, I believe my client would be willing to do the bare minimum needed to get to the backyard because that is their concern.
That that's true. I I mean, right, it sounds like everybody agrees that. Space in itself is not ideal and a- adding an access point would would, you know, serve that, so.
Well, you have an access point though. You've had an access point, but you don't want to use it, right?
So. I think, you know, we've been living there and after living there and spending time to live with my child. We've come to the realization that it's not a conducive access point. It's not like we use that. Every day to go in and out. And in fact, it's just like we were blocked off from going out to the backyard. I mean, we can go through the steps of going downstairs and then out the backyard, but the whole idea is like. This house doesn't really feel like a a home, you know, it's like it's not complete until we can access the backyard. You know, more free, you know, that. I feel kind of like having a first floor plan that showed. The space that you are in on the first floor. Would would be helpful in determining this, like, this all just says existing home to remain and it's two. Large rooms. That that take up the the entirety of the first floor. I don't recall what they are from the last application. You know, if you showed me that, uh, you know, this is our kitchen and the windows look over the backyard and that's where we watch our kids. And you know, that might make more sense to me, but all I have here is existing home to remain.
Sure.
What challenges would you face if you moved the rear access to the back latch above your house?
It looks like you always have some compliance space to.
Yeah, that that's a a highly elevated point, um, and that's the kitchen. So the kitchen sink faces that wall. Um, so there's no real uh, free space. The the free wall is exactly where the door is being closed. So it wouldn't have to change any.
Is there a door to the basement?
The door to the basement, uh, it's off the kitchen.
Is there like a physical door to go in, physical door? So to get outside, you have to go through that door down stairs.
Jordan, do you have the um, construction problems there? Is that what you got? Are you a full-size side of these? Okay, so look, I I don't want, um, to expect that Mr. Shio Vati thinks that seeing those plans. Um, could impact how you view the the deck or the access point, you certainly could get them. Let's do this. I'm gonna go to the public and and let's let's wrap that up. Would any members of the public that have any questions or comments with regard to the Lee application? Okay, let the record reflect on it. So. With regard to what's been discussed, um, I think that the decision that you should make before we deliberate and vote. Is whether or not you want to put on the table an alternative proposal. And I guess the question would be whether or not you can articulate to the board what that, if you're inclined to do it, what that alternative proposal would be. Um, and I don't know that you, how much you thought through that before you came in tonight, so I don't know if you're prepared.
Sure.
To tell us, you are.
Yes, um, and this is something I haven't discussed with Mr. Lee, but uh, certainly knowing that.
Would would you like to take a minute to speak to Mr. Lee outside of our presence so that you guys can come up with a?
I could probably answer.
Yeah, I I think we're good, you know, I I know the intent was to do, you know, just access the rear yard, that that was the main goal. Um, if we were to do a small landing, which is required for an exterior door. And then steps down towards the side of the house. That would greatly reduce the size of the deck, still provide the access to the yard, which is the main concern. Um, and that would only put us over that setback and again, uh, I don't have. Um, and that would only put us over that setback. And again, uh I don't have the exact number, but by. At at most, two or three feet.
Which direction are you talking about? Toward the compressors or toward?
Yes, towards the compressor. So the stairs would end up going down towards those compressors along the rear of the house. Not projecting further out from the house, but just riding down the rear wall of the house.
What's the minimum size of the landing?
Uh, three foot by three foot is the minimum size. I usually like to do four by four to make room for uh handrails and the door opening.
Okay, so um to the extent that um you were proposing an alternative to the board. Um, it would be a four by four landing. It would be stairs to get you down, the stairs that go to the, I think, the south. For horse to compressor.
Horse to compressor.
Um, so the entire projection off the rear of the structure would be no more than four feet all in?
Correct.
Okay. Um, elevations. We'd have a step down. Is it, is it coming?
I I typically add a six inch step down from the door, just in case there's snow and things like that.
Hmm, okay. Is that the way the the deck is designed?
Yes.
Okay.
So will the treads be going over the compressors?
No.
So what would be the new delta between the basement steps going down? And how far does that go?
I would still stay uh to where the uh north side of the deck is along that basement stair. That I would still open there. Um, but if there's concern about fall, the guardrail should counter. The concern about that. Um, and if we move this stair over further, we lose access from the living space to that stair.
No, he's but you, I'm not. He was understood. Uh, Doc, we're talking about for a minute was, you'll be with inside of that. So right now the stairwell projects out. You'll be further back.
Oh, yes, we're only going off the rear wall of the house four feet then.
But this, the stairs are approximately eight and a half feet off of the house. And then sure, there'd be four feet, so.
And this would be, this would be four feet. So you would be, you would be within the the delta, you you know, it would be a negative delta.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
And and the house sits approximately a foot and a half inside the rear setback on, so this would be in addition to two and a half feet. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, does anyone have any questions with regard to the alternative proposal that we just talked through? Any clarity needed after what this would be or what it would look like?
You just discussed the 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 grading in the rear and I know I heard it's steep. I was there and I recall it being steep. I just can't really tell from the pictures. Truly held slopes, so how will this new design be impacted by the grading?
Uh, along the rear of the house, it's it's actually a little more level. So it it wouldn't affect the number of stairs. It would probably be similar uh number of steps as was shown for the deck.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I I assume that what you'd like the board to consider is kind of option A, option B?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything further that you want the board to hear before we deliberate and vote?
Uh, I did a quick sketch, which I'd be happy to submit, so everybody has an idea of.
Yeah, so a- anything the board does, we were conditioned on you actually submitting the the formal drawing of it.
Sure.
Um, do you think there's anything gained by seeing what you've sketched or people could picture?
And just in case anybody's not quite sure of what I was.
Okay.
Is is your plan to scale?
It is not.
So you're approximating how big it would be.
Yeah, I I am showing a uh dimension to the size of the landing.
Sure, so we're gonna mark that. When I mark that, I take that.
Okay.
So mark it, you know, mark that A seven. So as that circulated, um, i- is there anything further that you want to present for the board? No, okay, so we're gonna wrap up discussion. Um, and now we're gonna deliberate. Um, and I think that what we should talk about is option A, option B. And if there are enough affirmative votes, which is four out of seven, um for the deck, um then we can do that first. And then we can do the alternative plan second, so that to the extent that there's more affirmative votes for the deck. Then we can.
You don't have to go, you can proceed.
It's your favorite, right, or really quick? One, one thing is potential condition of of an approval. Um, we discussed the the chart, the plans showing the incorrect numbers. So I'd want to condition an approval upon updating that. Um, so that the final plan doesn't affect incorrect numbers, but would you be okay with? Basically the removal and then notes referring to the resolution for the areas that haven't been calculated?
I I don't want to see the app and spend any money on putting numbers on paper that we already have. The bad numbers should come off. For sure. Um, and I don't, I don't care how it gets addressed. It can be tied into the original plans. It's not relevant to what we're really dealing with, other than the setbacks, which I understand to be correct, based on an accurate survey of the as-built condition, right?
Correct.
When is this survey dated? Twenty-four? So we've got, so I think we've got the most important stuff. So Jordan, yes, it needs to be resolved and it can be tied into the construction drawings.
And you agree.
Yeah, I would die either way.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we've circulated this, so all right, we're now deliberating. Liberate.
I would liberate. I thought we were deliberating.
I I I think, I think that we can start down here in a second. I mean, to, if if do you. You want to try and convince the other two that we're leaning, you have the three that are leaning in your direction, why we should do the depth, do you want to move towards option B?
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, I'm not saying it had to be an eleven by eleven. I I do, I just. Believe that he needs access from his moving level. Um, out there. And if this satisfies that, because it is significantly smaller, then um. On that be, that he gets it.
So you would lean option B. You don't want to press on option A.
Uh, no, I don't need to press on option.
Does anyone feel differently about option A?
No, I also would just say to Frank's uh slippery slope comment that I would, I would note, my opinion is based. On the safety factor.
Right.
Um, and similar, I'm thinking in terms of when we looked at um a pool. In a certain location and the ability to get there. It's kind of, you know, in my mind, it's a similar thing. If if you see something happening in your backyard, the ability to get there quickly. So that would be why. Um, I think that a a door from the first floor to the backyard is necessary. I also need for the second option.
So I completely agree with you and I'm disappointed in me not having identified this sooner when we worked. Very upset with myself. Um, but the truth is that the accommodation to the minimum. I feel very differently about than the accommodation to the eleven foot deck. And so to the minimum, I'm with you, because the last thing you would want is for this to eventually become a real problem. Okay, so. What? I don't know how I missed this.
It wasn't, it wasn't missed. I brought up, it was eliminated.
What we need to remember is how many problems.
Oh, I remember.
And so, that's not, let's not dwell on it.
Okay, it was years ago.
Okay, so I think we've uh moved beyond option A, moved to option B.
Okay, so proposal for resolution for option B, to approve option B.
To make a motion.
Motion.
So Jackie, here's, I I I think that your motion, that you're, that you're looking for is a proposal to approve. The proposal to construct in place of what was here, a four by four deck. With a stairway that is running directly down towards the two AC compressors. Um, in the rear of the yard and to grant the variance associated with that, based on the facts that we've collected tonight and the accuracy of the record. And also conditioned on there being a revision to the plan showing the improvement that they're actually proposing in your proposal. Yes, and that updated plan would would have to um to include uh changes to to uh reflect the actual condition. Uh, and by reference to the original construction drawings. That's what Jackie.
Second. Um, Mr. Vincheson?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, all abstained.
Yes.
Mr. Shiu Vett?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Lee, congratulations. Sorry to take so long. Okay, the next application is Stump and Peasey.
Under where it asks, has there been previous?
Yeah.
Variances.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Uh, yeah, I already announced it, so we're, we're now, we're lost. Any chances that are to testify, may I ask you to step forward and be sworn? Don't be shot.
That got really red.
See, raise your right, right hand. You're always for our test, the testimony, you give more or be a trend, I'll try to think about the truth. Another guess, not even a guess?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. My cat, we want to exhibit if we could. A one is going to be the application together with the checklist, together with the savings legal basis. A two is going to be the top graphic survey of July sixteen twenty twenty-four. A three will be the architecturals. Uh, just to give nine sheets, they are. March first of twenty twenty-five. System coverage like plan, I won't read it into record as to what's listed on the coverage sheet. Um, as I said, nine sheets, A four, the images, three images, three sheets. Um, zoning for the check one will be the resolution adopted September second of twenty zero four. CB two is going to be the first uh engineering report with signature of Mr. Rizzo dated December twenty thirty twenty twenty-four. CB three will be the C of the engineering report two. Uh, March thirteen twenty twenty-five, again with signature of Mr. Rizzo. Any other documents that you want to have, Mark, that's in the board, the images? As we go, if that's okay, counsel? Okay, Mark, as we go.
Very good. And and may I interrupt, um, to go through the checklist, waivers?
We have to reserve for any other waiver items that we need to address or checklist items?
Thanks, I don't have many. Um, I did not receive a submitted copy of the checklist, but I completed that myself um for the purpose of this. Um, certification from the tax collector, um which I verified through the website today, that taxes are current through February first of this year. And then the draft notice to the property owners, um and to be published in the paper with the initial submission. Um, I don't take any exception.
Do you recommend those waivers be granted to all board?
I'd recommend that be granted, yes.
Anyone have any questions? Will they come to be part of those first waivers? Okay, Mr. Ray.
Uh, good evening, Chairman, Board Members. Mark Adrian is on behalf of the applicants Lauren Peasey and Adam Stump. Uh, this is an application for single-family residents located in the RF five zone. Uh, by way of brief history, the property um was originally a nineteen thirties era, single-family residence with a detached rear garage. The option is purchased it uh last year and proposed to add a second story addition over an existing weird uh one-story addition. Uh, and a decorative portico chair on the north side measuring approximately fifteen feet by fifteen feet. Uh, also proposes a new coverage for an entry with steps and a complete renovation of residence. Uh, residences facade on uh all four sides. The applicants are proposing to reduce the existing lot coverage, which is shown on the dimensions as sixty-six point six percent to fifty-three point three. Percent, or fifty percent is the maximum. And they see branches associated with the portico chair and you see the floor area cap. Currently at twenty-two sixty-six, which is an existing condition, granted pursuant to that resolution that Mr. Kovacs referred to. Um, and extend that by three hundred ninety-seven square feet, representing the uh spare footage in the rear to be added. So um with with that, uh to my right is Brian Fitzgerald, Registered Architect. I ask that it would be sworn at this time and we'll get his credentials on the ground.
State your name for the records.
Brian Fitzgerald, F I T Z G E R K L D.
Good evening, Mr. Fitzgerald. Do you possess a license issued in the state of New Jersey?
Uh, yes, I do. And what our reporter goes, uh, registered architect in state of New Jersey, along with several other states. I've been practicing. On my own for about uh nine years now. Um. Okay, if I was in front of you guys, it was a while ago, but I'm frequently in front of, you know, Little Silver, Bronson, uh, Mountain Beach Ocean Board.
Chairman?
Anyone have a problem with Mr. Fitzgerald's production? Okay, that's good.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, can you orient the board to the site and uh the existing conditions and talk about what's proposed uh by the applicants?
Absolutely, um.
This we will mark as A five, I think it is. And can you describe that for the board's benefit?
Uh, it's a set of pictures of the front facade as well as a rear facade of the existing structure.
And uh those photos were taken by your office?
Uh, yes, and awful, collected awful.
And and they were, um, they accurately depict the existing conditions that the property?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, so as you can see, um, the the house is situated towards the street. It is, it's an old home, right? It's a hundred years old. That um at one point had some charm. Over the years, it's just kind of become a former Frankenstein home, it's added on to over the years. Uh, what we think was possibly a wraparound from porch, at one point in time was enclosed as a solid box with no windows. And, you know, as it's kind of developed and been added to and expanded on, it's kind of lost where it's kind of some of that character in the salon, right? You know, as we've done some exploration, you know, natural cedar was the initial um. Uh, plating material for the house that's been replaced with the line siding. Uh, some of the detail, the crown, the faces and the moldings, that's been covered up with aluminum. Then I can see, right, that we had some two diamond windows, some real character in the house. That's kind of been lost, some awkward planners in the front, looks very heavy, very frozen, um, doesn't really fit the neighborhood, I think one one used to. But over the years, it's kind of lost that, that character there. Um, and as we, you know, talk more about what we're proposing. One of the main goals and things we're trying to do is bring back the charm of the house. Improve the facade, improve the aesthetics of the structure as a whole. I, you know, kind of bring up that that Frankenstein added on small shopping rooms, uh, to be more of a livable house without. In our opinion, overdoing it. Um, but also asking for some things that I actually don't have to hear.
And what are those things?
So um initially, we are. Existing conditions where, you know, we have um, you know, front yard setback at twenty-five. We have twelve point five feet to the existing base or the planters. Uh, we're gonna remove them and add, you know, just a little nicer covered entry.
Can you pull up the uh conceptual elevation? Okay, and let's mark that as a six. We describe that as a black and white three D rendering of the front elevation.
Yes.
And I saw. Go on a six now.
So we kind of pull off a very awkward, flat, uninviting facade, bring some windows back into it. Bring a little more delicate of a stair, right, because we're so close to the street and kind of hopefully soften the facade, right? Bring back natural materials that were there, the real cedar, real crown moldings in the faces and the gable ends. Um, and and carry that down through the rest of the house.
Is there gonna be real cedar throughout the full facade on the outside?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Or a combination, maybe where we do the horizontal, we may do some party, but it's gonna be horizontal platform. Cedar's one of the options, absolutely.
Got it.
Color palette's gonna be, again, very classical, white, green accents. With colors, I'm messing around with, but again, it's gonna be a very traditional looking house. That was one of the goals, both inside and outside in terms of material choices. And scale pass.
Got it.
Also, you know, we do have um, uh, an existing right side yard setback. Uh, this porch, when it was enclosed. Didn't step over the side yard uh quite a bit. We're not talking about exacerbating that. Um, we're just gonna leave it as is, kind of clean it up, make it look a little nicer.
The right side is the south side, just.
The right side is the south side, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And then we're looking at a primary suite up on the second floor, as Mr. Ray thinks it said, over top of the existing first floor footprint. Uh, this is gonna be the primary suite uh for Adam Moore. Um, it's a. It's not a totally rest suite, nothing's. It's just the size, just livable for more, you know, every day. They currently have one bathroom on the second floor that's shared between having their kids. So they're gonna have their own uh primary ba- bathroom suite in there, closet in the space and a pretty modest. Um, primary suite, I think it was off the top of my head, well, I think.
So is it fair to say that second? Um, so is it fair to say that second story addition is between the existing dwelling and the cover deck that was approved in two thousand four?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So it's kind of a fill-in?
It's kind of filled, correct.
Is it visible at all from Lincoln Avenue?
Uh, it is not, no.
Okay.
Other than maybe, you know, again, you can see these dormers down here, again, we wanted to break up the facade, add some character, so as you're looking down in their driveway. Remains.
Straight on?
Straight on, no, not affected.
Okay.
Visibility of the house. Um. Also. One of the things that we're kind of missing in this house was, you know. How they would use the house day to day in terms of a, a garage, right? Loading groceries, loading kids, unloading kids, they have a detached garage, um. You know, that side was conducive depending on weather, rain, stuff like that. We couldn't really add an attached garage, the, the dimensions wouldn't fit, it would be larger than what we proposed now, even if we tried to swing it around to the back, there's no good way to kind of get in there. So, our plan B was to kind of come up with this portico chair concept, kind of help bring some more charm and traditional character back to the house, but also provide a modest covering. They could pull under, they can fit their whole car under, yeah, it's fifteen by fifteen, most cars are longer than that, but they could just pull the, the passenger doors in, yeah, hold those kids, hold more groceries. Stay out of the weather a little bit, obviously, you know, side yard setbacks very tight there, so we did the best we could, to shrink it down to not impose on the neighbor. Um, and just, again, kept it a very, very light structure, bringing charm back to the house.
Now, the functionality of that proposed portico chair, is that really as a result because the existing detached garage is at the very end of the property, and that this property. Unlike a typical, you know, fifty by one hundred is fifty by one fifty, so it's an extra fifty feet deep.
Correct, absolutely.
So that's a distinction factor.
Correct.
You use the existing garage today?
Uh, they use the existing garage right now, it's storage, and there is one car at the back of time, on the left side.
But, but they don't, they don't use, use it for any cars?
One car, right, on the left side right now, and then the other two days are for storage, which is.
Just confirm we're speaking.
Oh, sorry.
That's, that's right, she can go forward and, and say that.
Uh, Lauren Peasey, um, P I Z I, Hyphen, S T U N D. And yes, we use the far left, occasionally for a car, but the Russian storage.
And Dr. Wood, who was, and Board Members, were proposed to be continued for storage, you'll see on the site plan that the driveway is proposed to be revised, uh, thereby, that's a good chunk of where we reduce our lot coverage. To get a little bit closer to the conforming fifty percent, um, by removing that serviceability to the middle and right bay of the three bay garage.
Right, the garage from the pictures looks a little like beat up, is that, is it kind of super functional, or it's pretty?
It's in pretty much.
Okay.
The. One thing, one thing to note is on the, on the, um. On the rendering, that portico chair looks, but it really looks very nice, but. I, I lived across the street for about ten years, that, that. Lot, and, and a house next door to that is right on top of. Lot one, so, there really is very little space between that, which we're going to share and the house to, to the north.
And, and Mr. Nuchesny, I, I think it's very simple, I think that, um, that the board finds, is, you know, it, it, it doesn't function halfway, right? It can't be five feet, it's, 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 it's either.
I know, it's not even a little, you know, the, the piers that bother me, and I know maybe I'm speaking out of turn for a time, but.
Not at all.
The, uh, you know, having a second floor thing there, and I know that the house next door, it's also very old and been there forever, but it's right on top of that.
It's, it's a, it's a practical and wonderful aesthetic embellishment, and, and if the board doesn't find favor with it, then it's something that we could do without.
Yeah.
But it's the applicant's preference because of seeking that functionality, as well as adding a, a nice aesthetic benefit to show.
Yep.
But it's, it's, it's not, it's not a hill that we're gonna die on.
Mr. Reagan, what's the difference in length between this little overhang that exists currently, and then the portico chair?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Fitzgerald to peek and answer that.
So currently, we are eleven point five feet off, uh, the property line, the existing covering, and we're proposing point four.
Okay, so it's roughly eleven foot difference, plus or less?
Yeah, you know, it's significant, yes, okay.
It, it, it looks like there's a fence between the street and the garage. Uh, on both sides of the house, what's the access to the, uh, to that side of the garage?
So, I. Maybe super in, in this picture, but there is a double gate there.
Going back to A six, that's okay.
Uh, there is a double gate there that they use, uh, to pull a car through.
So you have to open those gates to.
Correct, yeah, and that's a function right now, they have to, kids, so they're trying to rattle kids from running down the driveway.
Thank you.
Did we cover the, uh, the floor plan improvements in the interior, both first and second, I know you touched upon the second floor, how about the first floor, what's going on there?
First floor?
Yeah.
And second floor, so this is a plan that you can kind of see when you come in, off the entry, uh, you're in an awkward space, right, it, it, and it was something that was added on to, right, and this is kind of where we think it kind of closed that. Open wraparound porch initially, uh, it's choppy with the foyer, there's some column, you see a projection on the roof. It's a very confused area, very dark area, right, again, no windows, why, you know, someone chose to enclose it, not like, like into the space, or some do that to the tree. Um. I don't understand what they did, um, you know, we kind of follow back to the dining room, we have a bedroom space right there, over to the left right now. As you kind of work back to the. Again, one of the choppy areas back here, where you have this transition space, you know, dining, kitchen, it's not really functional, um, a small awkward kitchen, small awkward mudroom, and then kind of always. Study in the back, um, that they currently using. Upstairs, these three bedrooms right now, can't awkwardly size, slow to the roof, um, with a bathroom that will be renovated. And, uh, a closet space that's kind of shared, this is what's considered kind of the primary suite right now, it's a. A very disorganized space, um, so we're looking to kind of improve that, what we're doing to improve that. Is, they kind of try to bring some stuff back to scale, so, looking like, first, first, and second, fourth plan. You know, we, we provide that covered entry, direct by a little groundling for the house, open it up with some windows, kind of really try to establish some more, uh, defined and invested deal space. Where there's more functionality there, keep the traditional stairs, the millwork is beautiful in there, and then kind of open it up, right, let's just deal with it kind of, hide that theme from the street and build from the inside. Find a nice, you know, larger, more open living room to kind of fit today's living standards. Double doors are gonna kind of walk you into a traditional dining room, um, and off to the side, that's gonna be kind of like the, the playroom for their children right now, so when they're. Kind of utilizing the kitchen or the living room, the kids can have a space, but not be too far. Uh, outside. Providing a small powder room, and small laundry room downstairs, a bit more of an open kitchen, again, we're not stepping out the back, so it's not. Um, working with the space we have, we're just trying to make it function more efficiently, and a little bit more efficient mudroom. I, pretty much where the current. That will. The portico chair would service that mudroom area, and that's why we're kind of talking about making it make sense with the kids and loading and groceries, and kind of just a day to day, uh, whether.
Is the basement usable at all, or is it?
Basement is not usable, basement is any combination crawl spaces, looked like maybe an old root cellar, there's a hole shoot in one thing, looks like it could have been on piers at some point in time. Um. No, it's got a cannibal zone.
Okay, understood.
Um, second floor, again, we kind of maintain the bedrooms, the existing walk-up, uh, ad- access that completely here will be removed, it's not needed, maybe there was something going on up there previously. But it's just gonna be a pull downstairs from a cannibal's, uh, and any storage, it doesn't make its way out into the crew garage. Uh, the bathroom's gonna remain the same, and then the primary bedroom, again, you can see, it's twelve by fifteen, it's not overly sized, with a, a attached primary bath. And we know that the portico chair roof is not meant to be. Used, advertised in any way shape or form. Yeah, we're not making the. Change, or lose any character in the house, we're looking to kind of elevate it and increase it. And we think we do a pretty good job with the spaces and, and kind of balancing that traditional aspect and the modern living of a family.
Mr. Fitzgerald, we have the opportunity to review, uh, Z B one, um, uh, Mr. Russo's letter in March thirteen.
Uh, yes.
Okay, and he asked us to discuss a couple of issues, referring you now to page four, item five, bottom of page four, right, and I touched upon the, uh, the garage, as did the applicant, compared to money, we can cover that. Um, and now the top of page five, item B. Verify the proposed front yard setback measured, as measured to the front of the stairs railing to the nearest tenth of a foot, for supply that should forward.
Uh, yes, on the roof, I just noted it today on the five. Site plan.
Okay.
We have. We measured, uh, twelve point five to the existing front of the planter, and we verified eleven point three today to the furthest point of what the railing would be, we feel, it's probably gonna be pulled back from that. But the worst case scenario would be eleven point five still.
Okay. Uh, item C, um, no, no existing, uh, stormwater troubles?
Uh, pretty, no, everything kind of appears, uh, based off chat survey to, to lend itself to running towards the street. Um, so, you know, we was trying to tie any proposed brothers and leaders into maybe a fitting system, and then kind of, you know, pull it towards the front, uh, where the street could pick it up and take it to the somewhere that's with this. Of a town.
So certainly we could provide a drywall system, however, I see that we're reducing it even below what the prior variance approval of fifty six percent was, so. I defer to Mr. Rizzo on that, Chairman, Board Members.
Did you look at, I mean, first of all, I acknowledge that you're reducing your previous coverage, but. Did you look to see what it would take to get the additional three point three down, if you can find?
So, again, we, you know, we could remove some of that here patio, if that's, you know, to, or to get down that fifty number.
Sure. Do you know, I mean?
It's doable when that patio put out.
Uh, this, are you, are you saying that? Knowing that would work, or do you know like how much of that patio it would take to get down?
We, we previously ran numbers, I don't know what that number is off my head, there was a, there was a portion of that that came off, leaving a little bit, that got to that number. But again, I can't speak of the actual square footage right now, look.
So, you know, lawyer math, three percent's gonna be roughly two hundred and twenty five square feet, and another tenth of that would be.
And I believe.
Twenty two, so, two forty seven is my, again, lawyer math is right.
We'll leave the patio in that, uh, resolution is all about it.
Patio, uh, in the two thousand four resolution.
One of the square footage, except in flat one. I think the square footage of the patio, uh, it is. So it's, it's, yeah, it's per. Is it as easy as squaring at all?
Could very well be.
Part of it's all, I don't do that many times on the fly, though. Yeah, I don't have any, uh.
Can he, he can do that. Their patio was, was capped at by a three hundred thirty four square feet. Okay, so, yes, we can.
So there's room to cut two hundred and forty seven square feet or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, then if we cut that, Mr. Rizzo, would the drywall system be necessary?
Um. So.
Between that and fifty percent?
The, the only increase in, in building coverage would strictly be the portico chair. Given that the second story additions over the footprint, and the reduction in the rear is. Is, I think, large enough to offset the front. Um, so as long as all of your, your gutters are actually draining, of course, towards the street, not towards adjacent properties. We could get you a, a drainage plant to die from, if you need one.
Yeah.
You, oh, wait.
Yeah, absolutely.
With, with topo on it, sure.
Of course.
I had a few more things, um, beyond this, and these were addressed really from our first letter. Um, that's why it's not here now, um. Will you agree to these as part of an approval and, and have them listed in the conditions, it is. The front driveway apron in the street is correct, and to replace that with a new apron?
Yes.
Um, the driveway to the rear, uh, existing garage is shown with. Two stone strips with grass in the middle, to maintain that grass in the middle, so that over time it doesn't just absolutely turn into one giant. Stone in the driveway, and then the third thing being to be touched on is that there'd be no access from the second story to the portico chair.
Correct, correct.
I'd recommend those, um.
What was, what was the middle area to be developed with? The driveway between the two strips?
The grass, do you mean eighteen?
Grass?
Yes. Yeah, there's, there's stone strips, and not to convert the middle area to stone, I'm, yeah, to stone all the time.
Chairman, Board Members, I have nothing further, Mr. Fitzgerald, at this time.
Okay, if you have any questions, Mr. Fitzgerald?
This one, so the extra four hundred square feet that were going over the cap. Is made up of that. Filling in the notch, let's call it in the back, over the single story. Um. Given that the house to the north is so close, and also. Is on, I think that lot's only fifty feet deep, oh, is it a hundred feet deep, not a hundred and fifty? Um, I'm just trying to understand why. That single story is, is like an open space issue where that new bulk is going to be overseeing. I'm not expressing myself, Paul, if you, if you want to get in.
I do, so, I believe what you, what you're saying is the extension, right, it's gonna overlook the front property that's very close to that.
Yeah, that's, that's just a concern I have, and I just want to look what it's spoken to.
I think where our, our, you know, you can kind of see this line of domination here in our.
Somebody's being posing over the, the neighborhood.
You know, I think the property line for the, the short lot you were speaking about, ends kind of out there, I think that.
Yeah, that's what.
Looks like the width of the house next door to the north sort of ends where the first story addition begins.
Right.
So they won't, they won't, you can confirm that they won't be looking out their windows to a new. Chunk of facade, because it's where they're, where they'd be looking would be at the existing house?
Correct, correct.
I couldn't visualize where that house, where that lot.
Yeah, it's, it's roughly that delineation.
I believe the house is shown on this plan.
I got, I just, yeah, yeah.
Oh, honestly, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the first story addition then, okay, gotcha.
Did you consider bringing back the porch?
Um. It would be nice to bring back the porch, but I think it would make, you know, and we kind of looked at what it would do to the floor plan. But I, I think they would. Really kind of impact that front living space, um, and kind of make what would. You know, we looked at, right, the extent. Of what reports would be, that living room right there would be, it was a fine room. For what it was back in the day, maybe when it was, was conceived in the nineteen thirties, but now it's just a little small for a family of four, potentially five, to kind of utilize and gathering. So while it will be. Very set of conclusion, I don't know if it would be practical for it there.
You put up your proposed floor plan? So, how does the first floor function here? The first floor, what was in the front door?
As, as proposed or as existing?
As proposed.
As proposed, okay, so we come in through the covered entry into an entry vestibule, this is kind of. Degradated from the living space by a wall, running from the back. And a transom window kind of opening, right, to kind of really set off a traditional, uh, entry vestibule area. Kind of work your way through into the foyer, which kind of shows off the staircase, uh, and the millwork on the staircase, and we're proposed to open it up, let some of that light into that kind of diamond window that we're gonna reuse. Um, because again, that is a dark corner of the space, and then that would kind of, you know, transition around into the minimum. Any more windows in the front, any more lighting, because again, it is very dark, uh, currently, obviously, we can't add windows over here, because we're so close to the property line, require safety. So we would just do a, uh, that inspired way to build in the center, or, and over the main kind of gathering space for the bed.
Okay.
Uh, it is nineteen by seventeen, for, I'm saying.
How big's the entire first floor?
Our first floor is. One thousand four hundred and fifty eight square feet.
And second floor, eleven sixty seven.
Much proposed.
That is.
As proposed, yes, existing fourteen fifty eight, seven seventy six on the second. So, again, going up that delta.
Can, can you envision, uh. How you could fashion the front of the house without getting closer to the street?
Okay, so, I mean, we, we could, right, so we have. You know, there's what it looks like right now, right, it's very. You know, there's what it looks like right now, right, it's very flat across the front. Uh, you just have these kind of massive uh brick and planters. I mean, we could, you know, arguably try to pull the stair back and remove them, really make them very steep stair to kind of match that front. Step back, I mean, we're only, uh. We're only, let's call it one foot difference for conversation, we're twelve point five, we're essentially eleven point three, I mean, we could simply just. Have the railing end on the last riser, I'm not sure aesthetically that's the best thing, but we could do that. Um, but we just feel that, you know, having a little. You know, nicer entry on the front just kind of sets the streetscape off a little bit.
But is it just the width of the, is it just the width of the balestir on the, that's?
Yeah, yeah, again, I don't want to land on the stair because it looks very high, it doesn't look very pleasant, so we kind of bring it down with the landing, and that. Right, is what's causing that overage, if you will, I mean, I can pull it back.
But your roof design, your roof design, it, it is, uh, the way that you have it on the proposed. Won't be compromised by, uh. Uh, that, that won't be compromised, you can do that anyway.
Correct.
Okay, uh, and, I mean, I think that would have to be aesthetics in the house. Uh. Your. Your proposal is you have a front yard required setback of twenty-five feet. And yet, you're twelve and a half feet and you're planning on coming back even further.
Uh, yeah, again, that.
If coming, coming forward even further.
Correct, and that's only just right the planter ran ago.
Do you know, do you know what the setback of the adjacent houses? Me, me.
I don't think they picked them up. No.
I don't think we have that.
But they're all, I mean, I know it's not a number. But looking down the streetscape, they're all kind of roughly in line with that. That facade line.
I, I live in this, Jeff, I live in this, there's plenty of houses. Typically, most of the houses on that street are. If, if these are. Every house on that block plus a couple on the next block. Predate zoning.
Look, if, if the setback's fifty percent of what's required and you're proposing to approach on it further, you should know the answers to those questions as to what the other houses are, I'm very surprised you don't. I want to get back to the first floor floor plan because we didn't finish. You've got fourteen hundred square feet on the first floor, your problem is you don't have much room on the second floor. Most obvious thing to do as I look at this house is to put that porch back. And then you can capture square footage and then you can put it upstairs. And what you can trade is that I'm going to give you the aesthetics back, I recognize that it's going to be a little tighter on the first floor and we're going to accommodate that, but we need to get a fourth bedroom upstairs. So was that considered?
It was, but we just don't see how without.
So here's the problem then, what you're doing is you're taking this, this zoning table, I understand putting the portage share, I can't even say it right, in the plans, but what you've done is you presented something. That shows no conformity whatsoever, it's just like the last plan. And what you've done is you've expanded it further to go to like a zero lot line. Which is crazy, and when you look at the aerial, you'll see how tight these halves are together, I'm really surprised that you've even decided to ask for it. But. Be that as it may, you've got a garage in fact, which is substantially oversized, which is right up on the property line, which is dilapidated and probably shouldn't still be there. You're not proposing to remove it, you're proposing to leave all the existing ills and then add new ones. But you're not proposing to remove anything and put it back, it just seems so obvious. That what you want to do is to give some of the first floor square footage back so you can put it on to the second. I recognize it's an accommodation because it's twenty-two hundred square foot R five zone.
Sure. Uh, yeah, we, you know, we just, right, the cost of doing that, what, what that will really.
The cost of doing what?
Uh, converting this all front and back to porch, front porch, and then taking the entire center of the house, what was shown for this. We're redoing that to accommodate a living space that, and then we lose a dining room. So again, we're not, we're, we're further reducing our first floor, which is a living space, again, we're just trying to gain a primary suite that, that fits kind of today's standards, and I understand. You know, the portico chair, right, I mean, that's close, we know that's, that's way. We were just looking for, you know, how we can maybe put.
I looked at these plans and my initial reaction was to put them down. Because it was so hard to understand how that made sense, your drawings are gorgeous, the house is fantastic, it doesn't sit. In a vacuum, it sits right next to other houses. So candidly, it's a misreputation, I understand you're not making a misrepresentation, but, but we know that, we get it. It's awesome on a piece of paper, but you've got to live with your neighbors. And so I also understand the need to update the house, we do it all the time. I get it, but I'm not seeing an accommodation. Associated with the existing. Deficiencies, I, 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 I understand we want more, we always want more.
Well. Couple things, right, so in my remarks, I, I hope I made clear that, I think I said this, that the. Portico chair wasn't something, wasn't gonna help, he wanted to die.
I'm allowed to react to it in the grievance if you put it on the plans and it strikes me as problematic to even put on the plan, so I'm candidly telling you my opinion, you know that's a lie, yeah. Terrific.
Okay, 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 good. So. What we're left with then is, and, and if it's an aesthetic consideration about otherwise functioning garage that's used for storage. As well as storage of the family's personality, as well as storage of a vehicle. I, I don't, I mean, that could be freshened, of course, if that's, if that's a consideration of the board aesthetically. But I don't think we're talking about tearing down that structure and building a new T dash garage.
So.
And I don't think that would be part of the proposal, so really what we get to is, i- is what's proposed. With this, I'll call it infill in the back between the covered patio that was approved in two thousand four. And the rest of the house. Which really doesn't have much of an impact on the neighborhood, is that an appropriate use, and the answer is, it's only appropriate if you restore the porch. I think the applicant has to be given a little bit of time to consider that.
So in two thousand.
I'm not saying no, but I'm just saying that's not, yeah.
I'm not proposing anything, I'm asking questions as to what you're proposing. So in two thousand and four, this is what the resolution said.
Right.
The subject property has a front yard setback of thirteen point eight five where twenty-five is required, way up. Right, uh, right side yard of one point five feet or five feet is required, way up. Habitual floor area of three, six, six, three, which is not what's shown on your plans as the existing condition.
Two, three, six, three.
I'm sorry if I missed something.
That's okay.
Two, three, Nick, two, three, six, three, where twenty-two hundred square feet is the maximum permitted. Fifty-six percent lock coverage where fifty percent is the maximum permitted. Garage side yard two point five where five foot is required. Garage rear yard four feet where five foot is required, that's not the current standard, I don't think, although maybe it isn't our five, you know. Garage floor area of forty-three point three or forty percent of the first floor area is permitted. And a three car garage where a two car garage is the maximum permitted, that's where we start. And now we've got all the other stuff. I think you've taken up some driveway, can you point me to any other accommodation to the existing nonconformity that I might have missed in the presentation? You've taken up some driveways, or anything else? Okay.
So to get down below the fifty percent. What, what could you do to get down below the fifty percent to? Take out one of the various, because the way I see it is the following, the portico chair. I think it's really tough for everyone here, right, I think you acknowledge it, if you get rid of that.
I've acknowledged that, right.
If you get rid of that, you're back to the existing condition of the fourteen, irrespective of what's on the other resolution, which needs to be addressed, right, but if you get rid of that. You're back to the existing condition, if you shave this or you do whatever you're gonna do, that takes out another variance, front. Kind of is what it is, maybe you can move it back a little bit, but then it, it's, it isolates it to the. To the bulk, right? And it, it takes four out of five of these things and tries to at least not make it worse. Right, so that's. I think that's a good starting point to at least talk from, to give us an idea of what can be. Pushed back to where it should be. And I agree to play, I, I, I agree with, with Chad, plans are beautiful, the, the house is beautiful. Hey, it's, it's, it's gorgeous, right, and it's, it's a huge improvement from what it's here. But I think we got to talk about how. What's acceptable and what's worth discussing and what's just too much. And I think the portico chair is a bridge too far. Um, and it seems to me that two hundred and forty feet is not hard to find to shave it, to get it under. If that helps. Right, you know, level set the rest of the application for review.
And, and we said that.
Yeah.
Right? So, again, I think what we're left with is the infill in the back. Right, if, if, if we comply with the, with a lot coverage. And we eliminate the portico chair, I think what we're left with is a second story addition in the back. And we make the accommodation on the railing, supposed to move it up, yeah, there's no, right, that's, that's not, again, that, that's, that's not de rigueur here, I.
I, listen, I do think there is something to be said for keeping this thing right. And fixing it and making it beautiful, someone bought this, they probably knock it down, five hundred twenty-two hundred square foot, hooky cutter, you know, cannae be piece of crap here, right? They'd still get more livable square footage anyway, because they jam in a big basement. So I, I do think there's merit, I understand the basement's not there. You know, so there's, there's less living space there as well, um. And I do like the idea it's in the back. But I think, I think you got to address these other. These other things that are a little, a little much to get it. To where it's the least, you know. Because it's a lot, right, it's asking for everything and then on top of it, the square.
So, again, I, I, I make the proffer that number one, we'd eliminate the portico chair. Number two, we reduce the patio so we achieve fifty percent lot coverage. Number three, we reduce the impact of the uh front railing so that uh it is, it does not aggravate the existing setback. Um, and, uh. I think those are the main concerns that I heard.
So the. Chairman said something before about taking back the front porch. But I don't know what, what's there now or what the functionality of it is. Um. It's always gonna look like. Covered porch that somebody walled in. And, and unless you turn it back into a, okay, if you turn it back into a porch. And you have to get rid of the portico chair. You have access to the front. Door undercover next to the driveway.
Such a great point.
Your front yard setback. Even if you put your. Eyelasters for your. Railing in front of the stairs to the front door, your front yard setback. Becomes. Significantly less. Because you're really removing a lot of the bulk at the front of the house. If that was a covered porch. And you said I'd like to have another. Foot and a half in front of what was approved in two thousand and four for the front yard setback. That, that. Be a lot easier than asking for a foot and a half in front of a solid wall. That's the distance that it is from the front yard. Front lot line. Um, visually.
And Mr. Sherritt, porch depth is typically. Six to seven. Eight feet, something like that.
What's, what's this depth right now, the, of that?
Well, it's part of the room.
Well.
It's part of the interior room, that's, I'm, I'm trying to.
Right, so they, so they. Whether it was previously, how, how it was set up to be buried or not, they, they might have put some beams in there, I don't know, probably not.
You just scale the roof line.
Yeah.
The top of the roof.
But I mean, you, you, you put the wall back where it was. And you've got a. Beautiful wraparound porch. And you've got a couple hundred square feet. That is, that is off of what you're, that's what you're talking about putting on the second floor.
Yeah.
What's that?
I, 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 I just want to clarify, so, so there, there's lines between designing and redesigning, and the truth is, Mr. Charles, it's clear that you know how to design a house because plans are gorgeous, I'll say it one more time. There's no question that you're able to design a very, very pretty home. What, what I'm struggling with is the inconsistencies of the asks with the structure and the attempt to try to find some middle ground. Because you need to find square footage to put on the second floor. And so I think the porch is just low hanging fruit, but it, 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 the, the covered area, man, that is so right on. The reason you don't have a covered area is because it was walled off to the neighborhood with no windows. And so rather than trying to accommodate the, the need for that, you've added the portico chair on the side, rather than doing what. Is most instinctive is to put a porch, uh, where the porch used to be, I can see that your client is interested in saying something.
Yeah.
Do you want to step forward so that we can pick up on the microphone briefly, right?
I'd like to confer before you speak.
Can we have a five minute recess, Jim?
Sure.
Thank you.
Got any admin?
I'll take this opportunity to just go through two quick admin items. Uh, minutes from six.
Okay.
Another meeting, which I have reviewed and found no changes, I'll make a motion to approve minutes from six.
Seconds.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Borde?
Uh, yes.
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 Let's scale all these.
Mr. Shevchenko.
Yes.
No, I have to rule, or did I?
I'm Mr. Leader.
Yeah. But, do you want?
Sure, do you mind passing me a ruler if you have one?
Nice. Uh, possible. Resolution two seventy hands, number B, I'll make a motion, you'll approve the resolution as submitted.
On the existing floor.
Uh, Mr. Hinchette?
Yes.
Angela? Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
Yes. I conclude the administrative portion. I don't know what we call the thing. Or, is that, is that called a lecture? Public promise? It's not anything. Student's education. Usually, so, not for. Anyway. Now that the end was just up. You take five and a couple of questions? Perfect. Uh, good problem, I'll break the slide.
That's right.
There's not even a gavel out.
Used to be.
Who took the gavel?
I don't know. That's the mayor.
Who took the Bible?
All right, Sheila, can you do a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Shevchenko?
Here.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Ravens. Chairman, Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to have a little recess, so. The request to convert a. Structure that has long since not functioned at a porch, back to a porch shut, kind of has us all flat footed, so we're gonna ask that the matter be carried for a month so that we can carefully consider it.
Mr. Ravens, I, I really feel the need to clarify that, I, I don't think that that's a reflection of what I intended to communicate, I think what I was communicating was that. From a macro level. I see an old porch and I see a need for square footage on the second floor. And I was asking whether it was considered and, and to the extent that it was, why it was rolled down. And I think the answer that I got was that it would limit the space in the first floor, which of course it would. But it would give you an opportunity to move it to the second, so we're not asking you to put the porch back. We asked a question, which is, I think, led you to want to take some time to look at it, and I'm good with that. But I don't want the record to reflect that, um, I personally or the board generally is trying to direct it in particular because we're not. Is that fair, I, I? You don't look.
Well, no, no, I, I think there's a strong sentiment articulated uh by several board members about restoring, that's what. My team is left with about restoring this porch and it catches us, as I said, respectfully, it catches us flat footed, we, we don't know the cost, we don't know the feasibility. It hasn't been used in that capacity, probably, I'm guessing, uneducated for decades. And so all I'm saying is, if that's the direction that we have to go in. For us to be informed to even consider it, we're gonna need the benefit of some time, please, that's all I'm saying.
I think if that, that time allowed you to answer the questions in a way that you could understand why that wasn't feasible, I think that that time would be well spent.
Terrific.
Okay, so you'd ask for, for us to carry?
Yes, please.
We have time.
If you're asking, did it relate to any necessary extension?
What kind, what kind of time are you looking for, Mr. Ravens, what? Before I even, I'm sorry, before I let you answer that, Sheila, how are we looking, Mike?
I don't know, you could speak to it better in terms of the, um. Reviews that you're working on, the Martha matter, and, yeah, just kind of. You know, the schedule, but it's not confirmed yet because. He hasn't done the review later. And then the, um. Santor application that is also supposed to be rescheduled and come back, but.
How many are deemed complete and scheduled, and, and, and I understand Martha, so beyond Martha?
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, all right, Mr. Ravens, when, when would you like to come in?
I, I think we should list it for May seventh.
First.
Excuse me, May first.
Okay. Uh, I think that's fine.
It stipulates any time for extension on the tougher decision.
Uh, so I'll make the motion, uh, to carry the, um. The, 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 uh, the, the, the matter, um, to the May first meeting without any obligation to renumber. I need a second. You'll hold on, please.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Borde?
Yes.
Under law?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Shevchenko?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ravens. Okay, that takes us to the, uh. so we so we need. So we need?
Yes, and if I just have two minutes to get. Sure, thank you.
Two?
About two for one special.
That's right.
Swear everybody in, at this point in time, actually, we have jurisdiction.
Yes.
You have jurisdiction. I swear that's funny, people. Want to be the truth, all true, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. You got same instructions I've given before, if you've been here this evening, before you start testing the fine, state your name, put your record spell over last name for us, please, okay? If I can, Mr. Ray, do we still have more? Uh, A one would be the application to the zoning board as well as the check, uh, the development checklist. A two will be the copy of the zoning officer's denial letter as June twenty five, twenty twenty four. A three will be the son, the architectural plans uh dated March twentieth, I guess it was revised to March twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty five.
Excuse me, twenty twenty five, rather. Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you.
Um A four will be the survey. The Atlanta survey dated June twenty seven, twenty twenty one. A five will be images of the exterior of the property, uh, some six pages that are being dated. Um we have the ZB one will be the engineering report number one. November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the signature of Mr. Rizzo. ZB two is getting report number two, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, again, the signature of Mr. Rizzo. ZB three will be the third engineering report on March twenty four, twenty five, twenty twenty five, and then the signature of Mr. Rizzo. Any other exhibits we can mark as we go along the way?
Uh, just as we go.
Okay, so we're up to A five at this point in time.
I've got ZB three. We concur.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll run through the the checklist, mission waivers.
Thank you.
Being this is the first time I'm presenting. First one is completed application guidelines checklist. Um, I printed it and included it myself, carry this. Second being draft, both notice the property on published in the paper. And then uh following outside MCs Mamba County Planning Board, Freehold, S U D, and Mamba County Department. I do not take any exception to board granting waivers.
Refunding the D B granted?
I recommend.
Anyone have a problem with those? Andrew.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, Mark Athens on behalf of the applicants, uh Daniel Sobinida and Joanne Sobinida. Uh, this is an application, ladies and gentlemen, involving property at thirty five Hillside Place. It's a corner lot. Uh, this is an undersized lot, slightly undersized at nine thousand feet, sixty six square feet, or eleven thousand five hundred is required in the R ten A zone. Uh, this is a circa nineteen fifties era home. Uh, it's got frontage on Hillside Place and South Woodland Avenue. Those furnitures are ninety four point nine feet. They're nonconforming. We're a hundred and fifteen feet is required. The width is also not conforming at ninety nine feet, we're a hundred and fifteen feet required. The existing front setback to South Woodland is nonconforming, that uh twenty five point one feet or thirty feet is required. It was, the property was purchased by the applicants about three years ago. The proposal this evening is to bump out their kitchen, which is in the front of the house and create a bench seating work area for their family of approximately two hundred and three square feet. An expanded covered front entry porch of about two hundred and fifty square feet towards the front side of the house and a covered rear entry of thirteen square feet. So the front creates a variance of five feet on the front yard setback to Hillside Place from the new stairs. It's a variance of three feet from the new entry porch. And also we're exceeding the floor area cap by a hundred and sixty five square feet from three thousand two hundred and twenty square feet to three thousand three hundred and eighty five square feet. Uh, al- also there's a rogue hot tub that we're seeking to legitimize. It was installed without a permit on the west side of the house um during the, it's a remnant of the COVID era. Uh, the ten foot side yard requirement uh is uh not met. Uh, it was installed at uh zero point three feet from the side yard. Um significantly, the property is also nonconforming with regard to FAR. Point two eight is required, point three three exists. And we're proposing to increase that by another uh one one hundredth of a percent to point three four. Um, so with that, um, I would um like to put uh Mr. Minkler's credentials on the record, although I note that uh about an hour and a half ago, he was still qualified.
Did you change your status?
Uh, no. Uh, I have presented before this board.
I remember that.
Bravo. One of the win columns, Chair. All right, Mr. Minkler, I wonder if you could take a moment, uh, orient the board uh to the applicant's property and talk a little bit about what's proposed this evening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, the applicants have uh what is considered a two story home, uh although it does rest on a sloped uh property. So the second story is the finished basement, which is mainly underground. Uh, it's only the rear elevation of the home that has any type of uh access or windows or doors to that basement. Um, from the front of the house and from the street, it looks like a one story home. Uh, there are no dormers or anything uh to, to that extent on the existing home. Um, so it does look uh rather squat, uh especially through the area. Uh, along the street, there are a lot of other uh true uh two story homes sticking out above the grade um with uh dormers to their attics. Uh, so this home really does look quite small uh by comparison to the other homes on the street, uh especially in the immediate area. Um, my clients are looking to expand their existing uh kitchen. Uh, the existing kitchen is, again, uh size uh to the original size of the home, the nineteen fifties era, so it is on the smaller side. Um, they're hoping to expand that kitchen uh to make it more usable for their family of five. Uh, as part of that kitchen expansion, they're adding a small um breakfast area uh to that kitchen, um which will overlook the, the front of the property. Um, they're also, uh, we are also proposing to expand their existing covered porch. Uh, right now they have what I would call a covered portico, uh portico just uh at the door itself. It's again kind of a, a small uh gable uh area at the door. We are expanding that um to, to make the home seem a little more prominent and fit in with the surrounding area a little better. Um, we are proposing to do a uh change of a location for the access to the existing screen porch to the side of the home. Uh, this will allow them to expand that kitchen, create more cabinet space. Um, so in order to make that access to the screen porch, there's a small bump out. Uh, that portion of the uh addition does conform the both the front and side yard setbacks. Uh, it is just the uh expansion towards the front of the house, which is uh going over the existing uh front yard setback. Um uh, as I said, the existing basement is finished. Um I do call out those floor areas there. Uh, I know that um I had spent some uh time with uh Mr. Rizzo regarding the floor area uh and getting that uh precise uh to the board specifications.
If I may interrupt for just one moment, I failed to mark the resolution of May eighth, nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety five as A six. Resolution by October sixth, two thousand, it's eighty seven. And December eleventh uh two thousand. Resolution is eighty eight, August seventeenth, two thousand and one, legislation as A nine. So Mr. Rizzo, before we get further into this, can I ask about the basement? So um we know that we have encountered situations where um basements uh would have been commonly known as basements were kind of reclassified as a result of the changes to the ordinance. Can you explain the situation here? Is this one of those situation?
Technically it is, um although I'll point out that whether we consider it a ground floor or basement, it's still going to be considered floor area and as a whole story. Um, in this case though, the qualification will be based on the average grade of all four corners. Um and then finished floor minus the average grade. It has to be less than thirty inches to count as a cellar. So in this case, um, that calculation comes out to four point three five feet. So that exceeds thirty inches.
So is this house exposed in the rear in such a way that it's, it's, it's not a traditional basement that you're getting caught up on because you're just more than thirty? You have full exposure and it's finished as a living level now?
Yes, full exposure to the rear elevation or retaining walls on the side of the home that allows for that rear elevation to be exposed.
And we've counted that in the script.
Yes.
Okay, and so I, I guess when the house was originally designed, in terms of the existing condition, it, it is likely that um that was considered a garage, I'm sorry, a basement, and that this house was probably previously measured only with that level when you walk in at the front. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Really not sure. I, I think it could definitely be categorized as its own board.
All right, Mr. Raykins, the reason I'm going through it is because you're triggering a D variance, which requires five of seven affirmative votes, as you well know. And the board has recognized that the changes to the ordinance has created a situation and I just want to make sure that we're all aware that with regard to a change, it sounds to me like that's not exactly what's happened here. Although I, I suspect that um over time um is probably has become more of a living level than maybe it once was originally intended, but it, it's, it's, you know. Whatever, it is what it is. Okay.
So it's, it's it's included. I don't know if historically how it was treated. That's relevant. Certainly we can, you know, we can delve in, delve into that, do some, do some research. It's counted for the purposes of, of today. We're at point three three nonconforming. We're trying to go to point three four with this.
Right, right. So your existing nonconforming condition
Yeah.
is not represented in the myriad of resolutions that we have with regard to the prior uh improvements to the property. And so I'm sort of picking up on the idea that it is likely that since you are deviating from the standard today, that at one point you were not, the property in the building was not seen as deviating from that standard because I don't see a variance for it.
Depending upon how it was defined or included, which I'm certainly not in a position to discuss presently.
Yeah, but you're not I, I don't have the table or the funding. In, in the, in the existing condition, you'd see the cap of thirty two twenty?
Uh, you'd see the cap. We're proposing existing condition? No, we're at, we're, we're, I think we're at the cap.
Do you, do you see the floor ratio?
Yes, we see the floor ratio due in part to the uh nonconforming lots.
Right, but the existing condition does not meet the floor ratio.
That's correct. It's point three three.
And it is not covered in a resolution. And I'm identifying for everybody.
Sure.
That, that had been a previous variance, that we would have a resolution on. And so I'm suggesting it's likely that that's because at one time it was not counted as traditional floor area. Otherwise it probably would have been cited.
I, I. By our new definition is what's causing the, the floor ratio deep.
I, I, I'm, I'm suggesting that it's a factor that you should consider when you look at the square footage numbers, yes.
Thank you. Yes, I, we don't have the history somewhere. It, it either didn't get counted or how it got counted is changed. We find ourselves today before touching anything at point three three.
The floor ratio in the zone hasn't changed for twenty years for sure, and I know it goes back further than that. The additions were done at a time where they would have known and the floor ratio would have been just what it is. So uh, okay. I think the way just to clarify the record is that floor area ratio or a variance of floor area ratio in all the prior resolution is not called out. We could just leave it there. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. That's gonna save us all a lot of time, though. Sorry. I didn't know where you were going. Sometimes in that round hole up here, you gotta know. Drop the rock then? Good. Back to you, Mr. Ray. Thank you.
Okay, so again, let's uh, you, I think you were talking a little bit about the floor plans and uh your, your calculations.
Yes, um yeah, the, the existing uh floor area is thirty one eighty two. Um, we are doing an addition of two hundred and three square feet um which uh increases that floor area. Uh, the proposed covered porch is two hundred and fifteen square feet. It is stepped back from the uh addition to the kitchen itself.
About two feet, right?
About two feet to give the home a little more character. Um, and again, we're, we're creating taller gables at the front of the house where currently uh there, there's really none existing. Um, just to try to compete uh or I shouldn't say compete, uh to complement uh the other houses on the street.
And what are the materials and colors that are proposed to be used identified to date?
Sure, the, the materials would be matching the existing home, which was primarily a cedar shake, uh whether it's a vinyl shake or a true cedar shake, I'd have to confirm. Um, but it currently has a shake loved to.
So, Mr. Raykins, what are the, what are the variances triggered by the application? Could you just?
Yep, so the variances triggered are well, let's do, let's do the new variances. And then we could do the nonconforming conditions. Well, they are. So um the, but the variances are uh set minimum front yard setback to um hillside at twenty five feet where thirty feet is, is required.
That's a new condition.
That's a new condition, right? South Woodland, again, not to confuse, but just to look back, South Woodland is currently a twenty five point one corner, the other corner. Okay? Um, the uh hot tub, the offending hot tub is at zero point three feet from the side property line.
Where is that hot tub?
That's on the um
Is it on the survey?
That's on the west, it's on the, it's on the plan.
No, it's not. It's on.
It's not on the survey, but it's on, it's on the updated uh plans, Bigfoot plans. It's on the, it's on the west side instruction, the northwest corner instruction. Sitting next to the deck there.
On the survey, it's a patio.
Why did they certify the survey over the for an affidavit of change? Which there is a change.
No, it was a survey from twenty twenty two.
The survey predates the hot tub, apparently.
But I thought the hot tub was COVID. Service twenty two.
It shows patio. That's the hot tub.
I thought I heard the survey was June twenty seventh, twenty one.
Uh, twenty twenty two, twenty two.
June twenty seven, twenty two.
Okay, so it sits on what is shown as a patio.
Yes.
Maybe behind the wooden deck.
It does.
I got it. Okay, so that's the location. So the
Yes.
So we address the um the, the front yard setback.
Right.
And now we might have a hot tub.
Right, the D variance increasing by from point three three to point three four.
Mm-hmm.
And then the uh maximum habitable quarter area were exceeded by a hundred and sixty five square feet from three two two zero to three three eight five. Okay, those are, those are the new variances.
Okay, the hot tub, I have zero point E one feet. I mentioned that's nine three quarters inch, it's just slightly, slightly increased by one clarification.
Okay.
Do you agree?
Yes, the, the house is a little skewed to the property line, so where the point three is closer to the screen.
So it's not only the hot tub, it's the deck that the hot tub is on that's right up against the property line.
It's a patio.
It's a patio.
Yeah, there's, there's a wood deck there as well, patio and then the screen.
Is, is the deck, so I want to talk about the preexisting nonconformities, but are, is the deck covered by one of the resolutions?
I'd have to check. Yeah, I haven't seen those resolutions. You haven't seen them?
No.
Okay. Okay, so what are the preexisting nonconformities?
So the preexisting nonconformities are So the preexisting nonconformities are the following. Minimum lots of at ninety eight sixty six where eleven five is required. The frontage is on the two streets hillside and south woodland at ninety four point six where one fifteen is required. Lot width at one, lot lot width at ninety nine where one fifteen is required. And then required front yard setback on south woodland at twenty five point one where thirty is required. And then the the hot tub.
But the wooden deck?
The deck too, yeah.
Yeah, it's the last one we need to say.
Is the minimum required side yard is ten feet where existing side yard setback is, you know, you know, it's zero point three, yeah.
So so the resolution in ninety five, which is the first resolution we have, says the subject comments has has a left side yard of point three feet. For ten feet is required. And my guess is that in ninety five, they were citing the condition of the existing wooden deck. Is that a fair?
Without having read it, it sounds like a fair assessment. Sounds like that's something that was authorized in ninety five.
Well, no. It was finding a fact, there wasn't a resolution included.
What was the porch or the deck? Because the the porch is. The porch is the same dimensions as the deck, but also point three at the screen.
Oh, the screen, so covering the screen porch is on one of these. Well.
The second one, the two.
This is actually really important, so I'm gonna.
I I just I I've just been handed it for the first time.
So what I what I really want to know is I want to know which of those improvements were authorized by other resolutions. And and to the extent that the wooden deck and the screen porch, as they sit today, were approved by one of those resolutions, it's it's material for us to understand that.
Right, so converting the side screen porch to the family room. Is 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 permitted in the October sixth two thousand resolution.
But that would that would assume, or that would point that the resolution from ninety five to the screen porch.
Yes, it's still a screen porch. It's not, it's it's not, there's no windows or.
I'm having my mental loss here. Yeah, okay. So there's another resolution. It does not seem to have been withdrawn dated December eleven, two thousand, which. Authorizes the six foot by eighteen foot wood deck in the rear of the house. Let's see if that's dimensioned.
Is there a deck in the rear of the house now? No.
I think that's the side yard, maybe not.
To the patio where the.
Well, since it's a quarter lot, that may be the rear lot. The difficulty is the dimension doesn't match up.
No.
It's your quarter lot, your traditional size, you can deem your yard.
But the address is hillside.
I I agree. If the traditional front of the house is the hillside, I I think it would be a stretch without your call. I understand it's a corner. But the resolution is sparse. But the dimensions don't match your deck anyway.
Right.
So I think we can skip it. And you don't have a deck of that dimension?
No.
Okay.
I I can't see where any of these. Honestly, there's no second floor addition. The deck that's there doesn't match the dimensions of any of these. There's no eight foot bay window in the front of the house. And was there something else here?
I thought the screen porch is mentioned in one.
It, but it's it's not done. It was a screen porch, they were going to turn it into a room, they never did. It's still a screen porch.
They tried to convert it, never got converted.
Okay.
Or they got it approved and never got it.
So I don't know that any of these ever actually got done.
Okay, but if a prior resolution said that an existing porch was approved to be converted into full living space and it wasn't converted. You can use that they were acknowledging that it was there and giving them permission to make it even more intensive than it is.
Right.
To the extent that these resolutions can be followed.
And I concur with that assessment. I see the porch.
But I don't.
I'm not sure about the deck or the patio.
I don't think you have anything on the deck of the bed.
Right.
Okay, that answers my question.
Was there anything else, Mr. Makler, with regard to the proposed improvements?
Did you identify all of the new variants?
I did, yeah, and the existing nonconformities.
Mr. Rizzo, what what is the requirement for the hot tub? If the hot tub were being installed today, what could you get a permit for? How far off the side yard?
Yeah, as an accessory structure. The side yard would be ten feet, as with the rear, but the rear complies. Side yard being, if you're on hillside place, the the left property.
Right, property. Okay, so that's supposed to be ten. How many square feet is that is that screened in porch?
Screened in porch, this is fourteen feet by fifteen.
That looks like the dimension.
Two hundred and thirty four square feet.
But we already had permission for them to utilize. It's expired and it's not it's not planned on enclosing it.
No, well, not the resolution that references that discusses that it was withdrawn. Closing it.
Wasn't drawn, correct.
Just leaving the porch.
And just to clarify, the screen porch is currently considered part of the floor area. So it is included. I'm surprised as well.
Well, if you take if you take the. If you take the two hundred and thirty four square feet. Off the three three eight five. You're back to conforming.
Correct.
What is that made to? We consider it.
I was about the way it was constructed. I thought it's the way it's constructed already.
I I I believe it to be, and I also discussed with the zoning office who agreed with my interpretation.
Yeah, I I think what's important is that we understand kind of what it is and how big it is so that we can just take it into account. So the so total square footage of the screening porch is what?
Two hundred and thirty four square feet.
Okay, so screened in porch, is that like a three season room type thing?
It's literally wooden panels with.
But how we can. If it's less than fifteen by fifteen, how is it more than two hundred and twenty five square feet? Am I math right? Fifteen times fifteen. I'm not understanding that math. How's that math work? If it's less than fifteen by fifteen, it can't be more than two twenty five, right?
That is based upon my measurements of of the screen.
The survey is wrong or.
Perhaps perhaps the dimensions are the inside.
Okay, okay.
So so chairman, since the architect has measured it, I would encourage the board to rely on his representation based upon his actual measurements. You measured it, I'm sorry, two thirty four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a reference, Mr. Reagan, in the resolution to the size of the screening porch?
There is not, not that I saw.
Okay.
I think we're there.
What's the distance? And I think it's ten feet from the lot line to the curb line, being that it's a corner and you're trying to encroach by another five feet on the front yard. Just worried about sightlines as you're coming around the corner from top when you're on to it.
And we are posing twenty five feet to the front of the house.
Are you asking my curb line to the property?
Yeah, like, because of course I know what it is to the curb, but is there appreciable, you know, the in real life, is it going to have issues?
It would be, yeah, it'd be another, yeah, about ten.
That right away.
It's marked as ten feet on the survey, on the left hand side. Oh, thanks, Al, yeah, I see it.
Is that right away?
That's right away.
So thirty really?
Thirty five feet at the closest point. Okay, so in real life, you've got an extra ten feet as well.
And the house to the left is a lot.
Considerably closer.
Considerably closer to hillside than the than the existing.
I just worry we can come out of the corner, you don't.
Okay.
Looks pretty good.
So did you measure the house that's immediately to your. I see Mrs. Cruz is here. I don't know if she's going to speak, but with regard to the house immediately to your west, I guess that is. The distance of that house to the to their setback?
I did not measure the distance of that house with the property line.
Okay.
If someone has the answer, they could step forward. Self spelling their last name.
Thank you, S O V I S A U. B I G N E. So I do have a document here of Google Maps. And there's a feature in Google Maps called a ruler, so I did, it's, I did a calculation of our neighbor's house in our house, and so. It is here at.
Sure, let's mark it as. As A six?
No, I think we're down because we marked the resolutions.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, A ten. Sorry about that.
Can you tell us what the dimension is on that depiction for your house first, please?
Okay, so for our house first, from the. Edge of the house to the curb.
Yes.
It's forty four feet current.
Okay, and your neighbor?
Thirty two feet.
Okay, so that the curb is not the property boundary, as everybody knows, so we need to deduct that, but the difference between the two is twelve feet? Okay, and and the proposal is to extend the front of your house by how many feet? Ten feet? That that's the furthest projection is ten?
Yes, the first projection is ten.
So fair conclusion that you'd be two feet inside of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Well.
But based on based on the Google, to the extent that's right.
Based on A ten.
It's ten and five. Well, although the existing was thirty.
I think the house is ten.
The house, but the actual steps, which I measured the existing condition to, is would be a five foot increase. Yeah.
Okay. Well, aren't there going to be steps on the new porch?
Yes.
Yeah, but they're set back from the the kitchen is proud of the porch steps, right?
The the furthest projection of the steps lines up with the ten foot addition.
Okay, so your new structure is effectively ten feet deep. You're absorbing the stairs into that structure. The existing front of the structure includes a portico with steps. And so the the net reduction of the front yard setback is five, but it's going to be completely different.
Correct.
Right, okay. Sure. Uh, do we have anything further?
I have no further questions of Mr. Makler at this time, chairman.
Okay, any board members have any further questions, Mr.?
We can't assume the right away to the left is the ceiling. Depth is the right away in front of the applicant's house, is that correct?
You have a dimension?
The right away with the south woodland as compared to hillside.
Uh, no, going property lines for.
Yeah, going west to the front, to the left on this, on this. I just want to make sure we're. The right away with the hillside place itself.
Yeah.
Remains, do you know if it changes? Right away with.
I wouldn't think of what I just wanted to confirm as you go west.
I I want to suggest that you be careful about answering that because I don't know that you have the information that.
If if, or if you know by, I was gonna say, obviously the plans don't, but if you know by observation, that's what I'm.
Uh, the survey does note a fifty foot right of way for south woodland.
Yeah, that right, the road's the same and it would be really weird for that right away to be different in front of the neighbor's house than yours.
Well, just to make sure, because we're measuring to the curb and if if that. That the ten foot is absorbed, it could be materially different if it gets squeezed for whatever reason.
As a practical matter, the measurement to the curb is a fair way to evaluate it. When we're going to talk technically about where it is relative to the front yard lot line, I think that's where we don't know for sure.
Right.
However, I do see Mrs. Cruz here, and it's my understanding that the Cruz home was built without variances and was fully conformant. And that's a little surprising because I guess this would suggest otherwise. I'm going to open it to the public. I'm going to ask whether or not thirty members of the public have any comments with regard to the application of this contract.
Hi, my name is Patricia Cruz.
You saw me swear the testimony you gave before the board, be the truth, all truth, not worth the truth?
Yes.
And you state your name for the record, spelling your last name, please.
Patricia Cruz, the R and C.
Thank you.
And I live at that house forty five hillside, which is next door. With Dan and Jolaine and. On the side of their house with a screen porch. So I've been living here twenty seven years, so I have a lot of background and history, there's questions on anything. Related to what you were discussing earlier.
So, so, Miss Cruz, all right, let's get to that. But first, can you help us answer the question with regard to your front yard setback? My recollection is that you built your house in a conforming manner without variances from the board, is that right?
Um, no, there was a slight variance related to a back part of our kitchen that. Probably a few feet off from what that back setback should be. We had a little block out in our kitchen. I believe that was the, we did have the coming, so I believe that was the only issue.
But there was no issue with the front yard?
No, so I have the our survey and. We have, we have wraparound porches on our house, so on my survey. Where my house starts, not where my porch starts, we are thirty two feet setback on the street. So I'm not sure that you're counting that or where my porch starts.
No, we would count it to the porch. And if he came before the board, the board would have recognized that, but it's. It would seem implausible.
Not necessarily. If it was twenty seven years ago, we may have changed, we were measuring.
You had to build it twenty.
Now, our house is fifteen years old.
Oh, okay.
So so the backstory for Mrs. Cruz is that she came in to renovate her house. And then she withdrew her application and then she decided to build a different house. I didn't remember that he came before the board at that time for that, but I guess you did.
Yeah, from my my understanding is it was just a slight issue with the back of the house.
You don't recall a front yard setback?
I don't.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I I invited you for comments and questions, so beyond that, do you have comments or questions with regard to the application?
Um, so anyway, regarding whatever the conversation was earlier, if there's questions around what happened to in two thousand. We were here in a meeting, so if there's questions related to that proposal, I can give you the history on that, but you guys. So what I would say is what I remember in two thousand, which were four neighbors prior. There was an application for them to take that entire screened porch area, which is point three feet off of our yard. And turn that into a two-story house. Stories up and expand that area and go two stories high, and it was all going to be within point three inches of our house. So we did come to the board and say that we would not support that on the front of them. And I don't believe any of the changes were made back in two thousand as part of that.
Miss Cruz, was the screened porch there in two thousand?
Um, so what was there was only the screen porch. That was the only part. There was no deck, there was nothing behind it. So that was what, and so as part of that proposal, they wanted to expand that back and go up two stories.
Okay.
So with the support of the board, not thinking that was appropriate right on our side yard. And us also not supporting it. That didn't happen, and then soon thereafter, those owners moved.
Okay.
And since then.
Left their screen porch.
What's that?
I say had left their screen.
And since then, there hasn't, from my recollection, been any other further proposals, uh, changes to the house, to that.
Okay.
That's the history. Um, so I've I've spoken with Dan and Jolaine and gone through the plans and, you know. That point three setback is a concern for us and our house. And what I would say is that, you know, our request to them in this in this proposal is that they do not. Extend that, make it larger or make it wider in any way. And so leave it as is in terms of what their motivation would be. And so. From the conversations we had and looking at the drawings, I feel like they have respected that request. So I would ask for the architect if he would please confirm that, but I don't think they've aggravated that situation at all. So with that, you know, our perspective is that the design that they're doing for the house, definitely is a beautiful design. And it's enhancing the look of the house and therefore enhancing our neighborhood, so. Given that there's no additional. Work getting done related to that screen porch and making that area more of a concern, we would be supportive of the application.
So, Miss Cruz, there's there's a screen porch and there's no proposal for us to bless it today in its existing location. There seems to be as part of that resolution reference to it, we don't know how it got there. Behind that, there's a deck. And we've not been asked to do anything with regard to the deck, and there's nothing in the resolutions that explains how that deck got there or whether or not there was a variance granted. However, there is a hot tub that is now located in that area, and we are being asked to grant a variance to effectively bless that in its existing condition. Is that something that you've considered? Are you aware of that? Do you object or are you?
Well, so I'm aware of all the situation. There, from my understanding, there was no. Approval granted on the deck that was put up by previous owners. Whatever the term you would use, not approved, but they did. So that's there now, and there's, you know, obviously nothing we can do about that, and, you know, the the hot tub is the hot tub. I don't really have any opinion on that. I don't really see that this question.
Well, the obvious question for the board with regard to the hot tub, just isolating that issue in itself, is if it's. If it were properly permitted, it would be ten feet from the property boundary. I think the question. Really for for you to be presented with, and I'm only gonna put you on the spot, is whether or not if the hot tub had been placed in a in a conforming location. And I don't even know if possible, whether or not that would be to your benefit, the idea of having these rules. Is to make sure that we're not imposing on our neighbors unreasonably. And candidly, there's a screen porch and a deck that seems to be there that we don't, we don't see paper confirming it's supposed to be there, at least. The board, the deck, the screen porch is there, but it sounds like they weren't being asked to approve that, they were being asked to approve the conversion of that. And now you've got the hot tub too, so all we're being asked to address is the hot tub, so clearly back to you is. If it were ten feet versus point three, would it would matter?
Yeah, I mean, I would I would say it's not a significant concern for us that is there. Um it it dips down, so when you're on our property, there's a drop, so you don't necessarily see it. Like you see the screen porch right there on our property. You know, I would say it's not a significant concern.
Is there landscaping in between, between the properties, between the hot tub and and your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have trees on our property that we put to try to hide the screen porch.
It it's also on the other side of your driveway.
It's quite, it's quite a bit away from your house, it looks like, based on the street views, is that correct?
What's on the other side of my back?
The off. It goes to hot tub, trees, driveway, and then your house, is that correct?
Hot tub, trees, our detached garage, which is.
Detached driveway right in your house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that's. Yeah, so they have their.
All right.
Again, just in summary, my our concern, because it's quite visible and it's large and um. And we feel that, you know, D values or property is to have a structure point three feet from us. The fact there's a hot tub that's dropped down low, that really isn't visible, is not a significant concern for us. We just wanna make sure that as this were to move forward, that nothing would work was going to be more detrimental. In terms of that structure of one three feet.
And I believe your question was to the architect to ask if he confirmed.
Correct.
What did you want him to confirm?
That nothing is getting um worse related to a structure point, like not getting larger. Or wider than or anything like that.
I think this is not gonna exacerbate the screen porch, maybe maybe I can help answer the answer the question, so. So, Mr. Makler, the screened in porch, no changes are proposed?
Uh no changes regards to the size of it, uh we are changing the door access uh from the inside of the house.
Right, the the wooden deck, right, no changes proposed with regard to the size of that?
No changes.
And the stone patio on which the hot tub sits, no, no change in size is proposed.
No changes to to the hot tub.
Okay, and that includes the group line that's on on the screen board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that your cross, thank you? It's my cross, okay, Mr. Akins, let me ask you a question, given uh Ms. Cruz's testimony, thank you, Ms. Cruz. Um would would you object to uh language in a resolution approving the variances? That discusses those structures that we're talking about and acknowledges that we see them, that we're not granting approval for them. But that we have discussed and acknowledged that they're not gonna change.
I I think based upon my very cursory review of these prior resolutions. Uh I think that would be entirely appropriate, yes, I support that, I think that's important. In the zoning chronology of this property, and it's not present from, again, my very cursory review of the prior resolution.
And and if you wanted to take more time to review it, that would be.
That's okay, I think we're, I think we're past it, you know, look looking at it, I don't think they helped. One way or the other, but I think the new resolution will help.
Yeah, and and my point is that if the new resolution documents that we see it and that we've acknowledged that, given what it is. That and the commitment that it will not change, that we've taken that into account as we review the proposal.
I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Notwithstanding the detail of the prior resolution.
No comment.
The good old days. Any other else in the public? Yeah, any other members in the public that have any comments or questions with regard to this application?
We lost the mayor.
Couldn't contain it. Uh Mr. Akins, you've gone to the public, do you have anything further for the board?
Other than thank the board for the consideration of the uh application on behalf of somebody, thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I just run through some questions that I have?
No, surely, good for Mr. Rizzo.
Thank you. Mr. Makler, um the survey we discussed from June twenty twenty two, did you have a chance to review that versus the property? And you believe that everything in the survey is accurate, um with the exception of the hot tub, which has since been identified on your plan?
Yes, the hot tub was the only thing that I saw different from the survey.
Okay, thanks, and then with the addition of the front, can you just describe what you're gonna be doing with existing plantings, any trees coming out, and then? What are you gonna do to propose conditions?
Uh there's currently some shrubbery around the house, which would be, you know, removed or or changed. Uh uh you know, to come out towards the the new addition.
And then propose.
Typical, correct, typical, yeah, consistent with the existing vegetation of property, correct.
Foundation planting, sorry.
No trees.
No, no trees.
Is there anything specific you're looking for?
No, just wanna make sure that the uh. Yeah.
Green grassed areas, remarked properly by the state.
Yeah, there was a note on the plans that the uh foundations planning should be installed.
Okay, correct.
Um there's a thorough ordinance requirement um for sidewalks, and in this case, your corner lot and both frontages don't have sidewalk. I recommend as a condition um that you contact the borough engineer and discuss uh the. Potential payment and loop in the sidewalk.
To be late to that condition. Why are the origins?
Stormwater management, I don't think you touched on it, but you are proposing to reduce some of your driveway?
Correct.
So correct? Um I would ask that that be looking as a condition as well, that the driveways um be reduced. And that is to provide a retaining lock coverage, which is forty percent of.
Correct.
Um yes, the front addition will just be.
Yes, uh yes, yes.
Man, that's.
Are there any existing adverse drainage conditions on the front?
Are there any, uh oh, we could ask the applicants, they're here directly. Uh Dan, it's over here, uh S A U V I G N E, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You good, Mr. Rizzo?
I'm all set, thanks, Mr. Chair.
You good, Mr. Akins?
All good, thank you.
All right, we can move on. I'd like to give a shout out to uh renovation of a ranch. Because we don't have enough of them in town, and I love to see any effort to try and make a ranch livable. Several things.
I love it. I think it's an excellent design. Um to know with the whole hot tub thing, I mean, we didn't really dig into it too much, other than does it bother you? I don't see where you could put it in a conforming space, you know, it's gonna be ten feet away. So are we just gonna memorialize it or? That's the thing I'm.
No, it's not if it exists.
No, no, we've announced to actually approve the hot tub in the existing location, the deck. So that is the proposal, and I'll I'll break protocol and ask the question. Is there a conforming location off of the deck that it can be moved into that would conform?
I asked the applicant that question, and the the answer, and and the architect, the answer is no.
Okay, how far could it be moved towards conformity?
I did not ask that question.
It looks like there's a lot of room.
Maybe.
Perhaps a foot.
So actually, what you have there is a fourteen point six foot screen porch based on the survey, the hot tub's probably eight feet. And then you've got a.
Uh the dimensions for the hot tub.
Dimensioned at seven foot three inches square.
So it's about half of that, and then I I is there structure right there, if you were to, you could slide it if you beat it most.
You have steps down to grade flat wood deck.
So you kind of stop stairs, one to two feet.
Dan, so then. There's actually no, it's literally right up against the stairs, so you'd have to to move it any up against the retaining wall. And up against the stairs, there was an empty space that's.
So you'd have to remove the stairs?
Move the stairs and move it, it to move it any distance.
And how far would it move if you relocated the stairs?
If I remove the stairs, uh I mean, it's probably about three feet maybe. But if I'm removing stairs, I'm gonna replace stairs in, which would have to get down to the yard, which would put those stairs right back.
The the stairs, you wouldn't be able to relocate those without creating a setback issue.
I I have some photos on page nine and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is significant stage, it's not just a stage.
So again, did you install the hot tub, or was it there when you built it?
Uh there's, I installed it.
Seems retaining wall of that property on.
That retaining wall is on my property, there's also another, the the retaining wall on the Cruz's property, so there's literally. There's starts at one place, but mine is necessary to be replaced once shortly after moving in. Because it was decrepit and and falling and falling into underneath the deck.
But, Mr. Rizzo, as I look at the picture on the bottom of page nine of your report. I see a hot tub, and I see how it's how it's depressed, if you will, but then that retaining wall is feet away.
The the retaining wall that's directly to the right, almost touching the hot tub, it's not really visible, but there is one that runs.
I see.
And then the retaining wall you can see.
So there's right up against, so so the deck's built around the hot tub?
The hot tub is, it was placed in a spot that was.
Made for a hot tub, it just.
Well, it conveniently worked out that way, but uh we moved in, there was an empty spot there that had like. Basically rotted wood that was part of or connected to, so there was like a patio there that was connected to um the existing retaining wall. That was rotted and needed to be replaced shortly after moving in, we replaced that as well as the platform that was already there. It, we found a hot tub that would fit in exactly that spot that was existing there and placed there.
Really isn't visible from. From the.
No, and I I gotta, I gotta say, as much as I can tell, you're a nice guy, and it was nice, nice guy, I I'm I'm troubled by the fact that it was put in without a permit, but. All in, it seems like it's in the best possible location, and the neighbor is most affected by. And as uh shared with the board, that she doesn't find it to be an offensive location.
And we stipulate that the uh screened in porch remains, the screened in porch?
Uh I actually would like to go even further, acknowledge that it's there, acknowledge that we don't know how it got there. But that we certainly recognize it preexists, the existing ownership, and that the um owner, just correct me if I'm misstating this. That the owners represented that the porch will stay in its exact, I'm saying exact, and obviously it could be maintained. But that it's gonna stay in the condition, and what I mean by that is no further finishing, no glass, no, no insulation. No heat, no cooling, whatever's there to it. And so if if that's okay. That that topical offer is what I was, was really marking it exactly as.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, if we can beautify it, like we're gonna replace our siding, we can fix the siding on that as well, but we're not making it any larger.
We would condition any approval on you, absolutely.
If you're like making it more attractive.
And and no heat.
No heat, that's fine.
Yeah, we're 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 looking to maintain its coordination.
And we don't wanna, we know that they've already dealt with it, you know. trouble with previous names, we don't wanna encroach upon them, we purposely did not make that any additions there, we don't wanna enclose it, we like it as an.
At the rate of turnover on your property, you're only gonna be there a few more years. Thank you. I I wanna create Dr. Lafer a roadmap for the next um.
Exactly.
For the next one. Anybody have some discussion, you good to go? Okay. You can make a uh.
No, there's just a lot of conditioning that that has gone through my head.
I'll have you to the conditions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the so. Uh application as submitted. With the following conditions, that the uh, let me think of it, that the screen porch be maintained in its current. An unaltered state, not to be improved upon in any way.
Well, we'll clarify that, that it is, that it's been acknowledged that it was an existing condition. For which we do not know uh how it uh got there, we don't identify variance for it. And that it's been acknowledged during the application that it's gonna be maintained in its current condition, most notably, screens not glass, no heating, no cooling. Um um. But that it can be maintained and have replacements in kind.
In cosmic.
Um yeah.
Furthermore, that the board acknowledges the existence of the hot tub in its current uh location.
With raising the variance, it's a variance.
Sorry, Chairman, pardon me, I thought I heard the word screen, the porch does have screens on it now.
Yes, only have screens, only have, no glass.
Right, that's the. Screens, no glass, yeah, okay.
Right.
You got that?
Yep, got it. Grant the various for the location and placement as exists for the hot tub. Uh based on the heat with um all plans be based on the uh numbers to be based on the actually the record. We have correct uh break on your train.
Yes.
And then a couple of things I mentioned, the. Where I've gone into the the borough engineer to discuss the.
We know.
And um. And that the the driveway limits will be reduced to comply.
If you do access from the second. Or on the start, excuse me, never mind, the removal of the driveway is part of the proposal, is there something specifically you wanna tie to? You wanna rematcher at the end or something?
I just wanna make sure that when. Everything's done, that the first thing we're doing, it captures the fact that that driveway is being used.
Okay, so we'll just be sure that that's a finding of fact.
Sure, yeah. The condition, as long as it's discussed in there.
Yes.
Okay.
If you go right on the forty percent with the reduction.
Well, that's what, that's how you articulate it, driveway would be used to such a condition.
That is one roundabout motion. And that's my motion.
Well done, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
You a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
I already know where we're here.
So we'll just open to the public, if anybody has any public statements or any comments they'd like to make, Josh is on, but let the record reflect on. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thanks, everyone.